The Sandy Urban Renewal Board to order. Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Chief Snyder?
Yes.
Executive Director Jones?
Yes, here.
Councilor Petzel?
Here.
Councilor Smallwood?
Here.
Councilor Hamblin will be joining in a little bit later. Councilor Lee?
Here.
Councilor Exner?
Here.
Councilor Schultz?
Here.
Mayor Polium?
Here. And well, I'm gonna usually we start off with our review of tonight's meeting. I will do that either at the, I'll do that at the beginning of our next work session for not our urban renewal boards. This is an urban renewal board meeting. With that, why don't we, Jordan, maybe you can start us off, or is it you, David, to discuss the Growing Together mural proposal?
Nope. That's Jordan. You know, I can, I can say just a few words, Jordan, if you want.
Sure. Yeah, sorry, I was on mute button, found it. You think I would know how to use these things after how many months we've been at it? Jeff, yeah, you want to kick us off with a brief staff report? And then Ms. Holly's here as well. And this is a follow up from, I think it was a month ago, that the idea was brought in front of the council as a discussion, and the idea of having it funded from urban renewal. And you saw a presentation on what the art mural project would look like. So this is now back as an official funding request from the urban renewal board.
So, you know, that's accurate. It was May 4th that the council considered the mural concept in a work session. The council did kind of indicate their approval of the concept and that they would like to see the work go forward with the acknowledgement that the formal request for urban renewal funding would obviously have to happen at an actual urban renewal board meeting, and that's what we have right here. I do, the other thing I do want to make clear is that as Ms. Holly is the artist, she is not here tonight in her capacity as Chair of the Arts Commission. Commissioner Pamela Smithstead is here representing the Arts Commission, and she will say a few words first, I believe, regarding their request for funding of urban renewal funds. And then Becky Holly is here to field other kind of more artistic questions, or if there are, you know, project implementation questions, that's, that's going to be kind of more her area. So that's, that's my basic rundown, and then, and then I'll just pass the torch over to Commissioner Smithstead.
Hello. Most of you have seen this mural in detail presented at one meeting or another, so I'm not going to go into any details at all of the design of the mural. There may be a couple of you that haven't seen it, and we'd be happy to talk with you at another time. As was mentioned, Becky is here as the artist. She's not benefiting in any way financially from this project. She's recusing herself from any Art Commission decisions regarding this project. This project has been unanimously approved by the Art Commission, and we've got wonderful unanimous support from the city council. So the only thing that I would want to say is just to remind you of the primary benefits as we see it as an Art Commission of this project to the city. Beautifying an area that is really a busy area, this is to go just opposite Centennial Plaza, next to the current Centennial mural. So, you know, cars that drive by on that street easily see the mural. People that come and go with public transport see the mural. And beautifying that area makes the area a more livable space for both residents and a really wonderful attraction for visitors. Beautiful art enhances all of our lives and makes our town all that much more visible. And this particular mural is very thought provoking, and we're hoping that it will cause people to linger and maybe want to go out to lunch or maybe enjoy some of the other amenities in town rather than just driving right through. Also, it will benefit businesses that contribute financially because they'll be named as part of the design of the mural or on the plaque. And it will actually promote safety for that area because Becky's requesting lighting for the mural. That loading dock there is just kind of a dark, dark space, and lighting for the mural should make that whole area safer. So we hope for your support. Thank you.
The only other thing that I'll add, and I'm sorry I didn't say it before, we did receive one public comment on this item. I've posted it to the, to the agenda, so that's there for your review.
Thank you, Jeff. And any, any questions? Comments? Yeah, Councilor Exner?
Yeah, the only, no questions from this point. We've talked over a couple of times now about what this mural entails and how things are put together. So I don't know that there's any questions that way, but I do know that this one would, because of the structure of this particular mural, it kind of gives the impression that the city of Sandy is up and doing things. Being able to have a mural that just depicts activities and events and kind of character of what Sandy represents, I think, would make it really a benefit for the city. I don't want to labor too muchly, but I do know that a number of the businesses in town have already kind of made some indications that they'd like to be a participant to this one. And so I think there's already a lot of interest in making this thing happen locally, and it's a chance for the city and some businesses to partner, so.
Will you take me, Pamela, through the fundraising for this project? Meaning, so I know that we're talking about $20,000 of urban renewal funds, but that is the kind of be used, my understanding is, you know, after, and Becky can answer it too, but after we, you know, exhaust all of our fundraising opportunities and stuff. So will you kind of take me through the plan on fundraising and how the urban renewal dollars works with your fundraising plan?
I'm going to let Becky do that.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah.
Again, I'm speaking tonight as the artist and the project planner. I offered to donate both the design and the overseeing of the project to the city. So. Let's start with the fundraising first. We have fundraising vehicles that are meant to generate money for the city art fund. And we're offering hand painted flowers on a wall for a specific dollar donation. This would be a smaller donation, and it'd be similar to buying a brick, that type of thing. And other elements would be for much larger donations, like they, someone could choose to sponsor a dog, for instance. There are two dogs in the, in the mural, and they have collars. So someone may want to sponsor a figure in the mural, and that can be personalized with a name on the collar, something like that. So there are mechanisms that will allow us to raise money from both private citizens, donors, and also go to businesses. One of the things that I might put out is the shopping bag that the first figure is holding could say Shop Sandy. And that would be something that someone could sponsor. We also just, I've received emails from about 10 or 12 people pledging financial donations already, and we haven't really gone out for those donations yet. I haven't put it on my personal Facebook or advertised it simply because we want to know that the project is going forward before we start really seriously start a fundraising campaign. So as far as crunching some numbers, in the project proposal, there was a range of, a range of numbers, 16,000, 16,800 to $20,000. But I realized after I had put that on there that I really should have added the donation of the design to that bottom figure. The, the project value is actually 20,800 to 26,000. The reason those numbers are a little soft is for the following reasons. The figures and the flowers are going to be eighth inch steel. So we know what the figure, the people and the animals are going to be. That's roughly $5,500. But when we start doing the flowers and making additions, it could run up as much as 6,000. But those subscription items will not only be paying for themselves, but the, the donation would have enough left in it to help fund the rest of the mural. So the Growing Together, the Grow Together sign, I have a range of 1,500 to $3,000 after speaking to a couple of sign companies. That's an, that's an item that I'm going to try to go to a business or a family and have them sponsor that item and leave some of the design and expense in a negotiation for a donation. So I put just a range on that. We're going to do a wall plaque with listing donors and the artistic vision on that. So it will be, if we end up with a lot of donors, it may go over $500 just to get everybody on it. There's also another soft figure, and this is quite a big flexible figure, the contractor installation. I spoke to a contractor about it, and their estimate was 45 to 5,500 for installation. However, if the city approves, there are two people who are known to the building owner who've already agreed to volunteer two days each toward the installation. We would need one more volunteer because the pieces are quite heavy. But the city would need to pay for a scissor lift rental, wall anchors, and other small supplies for around $1,000. So when you take my donation, which is around $6,000 value, and you add another few thousand dollars in other donated labor, we're really, we really already, even without a fundraising campaign, have significant donations coming toward the mural. The wall space is being donated by the building owner, and I, he sent an email which I forwarded to Tyler and Jeff stating his support so that you would know that he's intending to hear from the city lawyer about an easement and agreement. And one of the items not in the budget at all is if the owner is agreeable in this negotiation, we would really like additional lighting installed over the sign, the Grow Together sign that's on the, the street at Proctor because that will illuminate that end of the building and the sign to attract attention to it. So, you know, Oregon has a lot of dim days and evenings and so on. This will get more attention to the mural and also light that loading dock, which is kind of a pit.
So I, so Becky, I think a lot of us, a lot of this is in the staff report on the overall budget and stuff, and I think a lot of us are comfortable with that. I guess mine was going back to the, my question kind of is going back to our last meeting is, is that the $20,000 is there to provide folks with assurances that this project is going to happen and be serious? But we're hoping to raise the bulk of that money from the community. And that's correct, right?
Correct. I can't predict what the donations might be, especially in these uncertain times. But the donations that have been pledged already are pretty significant. I'm, if I were going to go out on a limb, my personal goal is about $13,000 in urban renewal funds at the most. That would be, that would be my hope.
Okay. Any other questions? Commentary? Councilor Exner?
Yeah, if, let's say we do get 15, we say 13 for urban renewal money, but we find out that we've got more money than that donated. Would there be a process to make it get reimbursed back into the urban renewal dollars so that, or are we talking about using it for something else?
Well, I, I think the approval tonight and staff, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe basically we're given the approval of a budget not to exceed. So they'll be coming to us, you know, they'll be doing their fundraising efforts, right? And then they'll be coming back to the city with whatever funds they need left. So it wouldn't be a matter of asking for any money back. We, we just wouldn't, wouldn't need to write that check to begin with. If I'm wrong, please correct me. Yeah, okay.
So you're planning on cutting off the donations at a certain point, and that will be it? There won't be any more donations?
No, meaning, meaning the contribution from the urban renewal account is not going to exceed a certain threshold. Meaning, you know, we're going to give 20,000, but if they raise 17,000, we're only going to write them a check for three. If they raise 15,000, we're going to write them a check for five. Becky?
We would like to do a fundraising campaign through the month of August. This has to be applied to the wall before the rains. And so I'm personally going to front the money for the metal powder coating and, and all the things that need to be fronted. And so there'll only be one ask at the end of August for whatever money has not been donated. Does that seem? Okay. So if money after August, and we've submitted our, our final thing, what I would like to see happen, if people are still giving to that fund, is that the money goes into the city art fund for maintenance and toward new art in the future. And it, that money in that account can only be spent on maintenance and new public art. So it's not a slush fund for the Arts Commission in, in any way. It's strictly for those purposes, correct, Tyler?
To get myself off mute, sorry about that. The art fund as it's structured currently is for, or the intent of it, rather, is for maintenance and, you know, refurbishing and that sort of thing of the public art that we have, yes. So it's not a slush fund, as Becky indicated. And like anything else that's in our trust fund, you know, there's pretty strict protocols that need to be met before that money can be spent. And I kind of oversee that. And the majority of the instances, other various department heads have access to funds. For example, like the Senior Center has the dollars for dilemmas that are used for programs that help senior citizens with financial issues. And Tanya, you know, oversees how that is spent, but ultimately, you know, I review those expenditures as well when they come across my desk. So everything in the trust fund, for whatever it is, is used for, is tightly monitored.
Great. Okay. Well, I, yeah, Chris, you have your hand up, but you're going to need to unmute.
So we've been talking about this with, during our board meetings with our chamber directors and that. And I guess our concern at this point is, is this the right time to be doing, you know, this big of a project with the current situation and our businesses and that type of thing? You know, you know, the city gets criticized for every little penny they spend. So, you know, we're kind of, you know, a little concerned about how many businesses need help right now. And, you know, there, many of them, their employees who are citizens of Sandy need additional help too. So, you know, putting $20,000 out for an art project, not that we're not supportive of the art project, but we're just, you know, from the business standpoint, you know, how is that going to look to the community? And that's, you know, one of our concerns, you know, we're trying to figure out which way to vote on this, honestly.
Okay. Now, that's, that's good feedback. And to Chris's point, right, the urban renewal fund is the same fund in which we did some of our economic relief programs out of. So it is definitely not, you know, it's definitely not out of line to say that, you know, these funds would be coming from a bucket that could potentially be going towards some kind of economic relief. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. Comment? Questions? I see Becky's hand up.
Well, I think that the Growing Together theme is a very timely theme for right now because we really need to find common ground in the community and a place that we can plant some positive seeds. And growing together on so many levels right now just seems, it seems like a really good time for this particular mural. Also statistically, economic development wise, art is known as a, a good economic development tool to get people to, some of the 30,000 cars who drive through town to stop and take a look at the, the art in town, get a cup of coffee, have a meal, stop shop, look around. So it may seem like a frivolous expenditure to a lot of people because art to a lot of people is a frivolous expenditure. But I feel that public art should be supported by the public, not just in money, but in community involvement. That's why we're really stressing the fundraising aspect of it rather than just asking for an outright full money support from urban renewal because the more individuals we can involve in the community in this, I think the more it will make the community feel like something special is being created.
One thing to add on to Becky's point, just, I'm devil's advocate tonight, is that some councils, councilors will remember walking around Redmond when we were there during the League of Oregon Cities visit, and art displayed throughout a community does do a whole lot of bringing a sense of culture and identity and belonging, and people wanting to walk around and enjoy the art. So you shop and dine and recreate and do different things. So there's definitely that aspect to it. I'm going to have to be a little bit of a jerk here and needle counsel a little bit. I'm going to need your participation a little bit tonight, guys. We do need to give staff direction. It can't just be me and Becky doing that. Councilor Schultz, and then Petzel, and then it looks like Jordan has some comments. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm still super supportive of this project. I would like to remind you all that another volunteer group in our city just raised $21,000 during a pandemic for another amazing city project at the library. So I believe that Becky and her team will be able to get a lot of this in donations and fundraised. And I'm not super concerned that we're going to end up spending the majority of it from urban renewal. This is a great town, and we support art, and we support this project. And so I'm still passionate about it and want to move forward.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Petzel?
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally in support of this project. I think it's a great project, love the community art. I do think it will bring together and attract people to our community and to our businesses, especially in the downtown, so I applaud you for that. My next comment has nothing to do with the public art, but just a reminder of concerned about always going to the urban renewal bucket to get money and that we need to be very cautious on that. And we should put together a master plan of where the money is coming from. And maybe that master plan will include some funding in the future that is dedicated more like some of the urban renewal projects we've done in the past towards public art. I do think we need to go forward and have that, not always coming back to the same bucket for money. Now, I've said that comment, and I'll say it again the next time something comes up. And I know you've heard it from me in the past, but I do think that this is a great project and very supportive of it. Thank you to Pamela and Becky in the getting public to donate money and working hard for that. I think it will be very appreciative, and I hope that it's very successful like the library in that maybe we won't be spending anybody, money out of the urban renewal bucket on that. But we appreciate your hard work and your vision.
Thank you.
Chair, does the board want to take any public comment on this item? The item came before the regular public comment section on the council agenda. So I don't know if you wanted to add any opportunity for public comment for the urban renewal board or not?
Yeah, I mean, we can take some public testimony for the urban renewal board.
Now, we do have one hand up, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, so Kathleen Walker, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Kathleen, let's go ahead and abide by the typical council rules. Please state your name, address for the record, and we'll go with three minutes of time, please. It looks like you're muted, so you'll want to unmute yourself. Or maybe it's Jeff that needs to do that, but.
I'm trying, I'm attempting to. It doesn't seem to be working. Let me try again.
Hold on.
Oh, there we go.
There she is.
Okay. Hi, thank you. Yes, Kathleen Walker, 15920 Southeast Bluff Road. Thank you for the opportunity to come on, on this. I'm going to kind of, I really appreciate Becky's comments about involving the community. I'm just going to take it a little different direction, though. There really, to my knowledge, hasn't been very much community input in this. I love the idea having, and I sent you all a memo on this. I love the idea of having another mural on Hoffman Avenue. And the Arts Commission is such a hardworking, talented group of people. Before the existence of the commission, the Parks Board worked with a local artist on a great mural in Fantasy Forest. We covered the cost of all her materials, and she volunteered her time, and we love the result there of that mural. I would ask the urban renewal board to postpone approving this project and ask the council and the Arts Commission to consider amending the process for this wonderful mural project. I would suggest the Arts Commission compile a Hoffman mural theme and guideline scope of work with a not to exceed price for the mural. And that then could be marketed to artists in Sandy and the Portland metro area like the Sandy artists that did the mural in Fantasy Forest. I think artists would be willing to submit proposals as they so often do for the arts grants that are available. I know several that would be interested, including the one in, in my letter mentioned. The Arts Commission could then help fundraise and market the finalists to the community for a possible community vote on the design of the mural, and with the Arts Commission maybe having the final selection. Involving the community at large in these things are so important. The Arts Commission Chair is a very talented artist. Allowing an advisory board chair or member to design and implement a city contract without competition could raise the eyebrows of some folks. At the first presentation, it wasn't clear that she was not getting paid, but she, I talked to her after the meeting, and she said that she was not, and she was volunteering her time, which is wonderful. Still, her being the artist, the Art Commission Chair, and the artist whose vision we're going to be possibly paying 20,000 to implement raises eyebrows. If Brad Picking, the building owner, and other donors were paying for this, I would say, great, and I would throw my money in too. But when we're using public money, we need to involve the public much more than we have. I would hate to see this turn out like that Sandy logo and motto change that many people saw as a waste of $70,000. That said, the Arts Commission are a fantastic, dedicated group of people, and it's great that they're volunteering to work with the staff and council and urban renewal folks on managing this exciting mural project. Folks serving, folks serving on the board that want to contract for city funds can resign their position and bid on like others. Put me down for a donation when it does come by, and I really appreciate you taking my input. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, Councilor Schultz?
Um, just to kind of clarify something, um, the Arts Commission did a pretty impressive, um, public outreach, um, I want to say a few months ago, Becky, am I correct?
Yeah, the Public Art Forum.
Public Art Forum. She had two separate.
And we, yeah, and we came to your thing too.
Yeah. So there's been a lot of public, um, input and outreach into this project. I just would like that to be pointed out.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Schultz. And I would also mention that the Arts Commission itself is a community, a group of community citizens interested in art that are participating. Uh, Councilor Exner?
Yeah, Councilor Schultz kind of beat me to the punch about the participation with the different evenings. Not really, of, of all the people that I've talked to about this one, I, except for what we just had, uh, I've never heard anything negative about this. This seemed like it's kind of got a universal, uh, agreement that this is something that really would make sense for the city of Sandy. It's a, it's an involvement kind of a mural. It's something that, in that we're not talking about one artist, we're not talking about, um, one person committed to making it. We've got a lot of people that are interested in moving this thing forward. And it seems to me that this has got an energy on its own. And rather than waiting another year, because I think if we were to go through and do a reevaluation, sometimes I get real tired of seeing a lot of evaluations for things that seem to be pretty logical. And if they were to move through and have to wait until the following year, we might again, uh, lose some steam. But another piece of it here is, um, I know we had some comments earlier about the fact that some of our businesses are not as affluent, I guess, as it might have been, uh, three months ago, four months ago. But one of the things that I've seen is that as people seize the real need for this, the real energy for acceptance of this, they're reaching pockets that are, you know, maybe not even known to us. And maybe a few of the businesses won't be able to support it at this time. But I think there's enough of us, uh, who are interested in supporting this to get something forward. I think there will be, uh, more than enough energy in this one. We go forward.
So, Council, I, I, you know, I, I love this project too. Uh, but I, I do want to listen to the chambers, um, feedback. Um, you know, it is something that I have heard, I have heard and seen, um, comments on, you know, businesses are struggling and, and, you know, we, we don't know what our budgets are necessarily going to look like coming out of this pandemic. Um, to Councilor Schultz's point of the Friends of the Library's fundraising effort, um, they just raised, you know, $20,000, uh, for the computers. And I think all of us probably could look at each other and say, you know, they would have raised $17,000 and come to us. We, we probably would have found a way, right, uh, to get them those computers. And I don't necessarily know if, I guess what I am having a hard time with, um, on that point of kind of the optics and, you know, and our businesses being in need, is this why we're treating this any differently? Which means, w- we didn't do a formal vote or tell the Friends of the Library that if they didn't reach their $20,000 that, um, you know, we didn't pre-approve $20,000 for the computers. Uh, they went and raised the $20,000 for the computers. Um, here we have, um, an art design that has been approved by the Arts Commission. We have a building owner, um, that has given public, um, support to the project and to the art. Um, I've gotta believe that the commission has more than enough, um, to take it to the community to try to raise the money. And with these Zoom meetings, I mean, it's not hard to wrangle in, uh, no offense, uh, Chris and Phil, but it's not that hard to get you guys into a meeting. Uh, I, 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 I don't know why we couldn't just reconvene at a later point, uh, to push the project over the top. Uh, I guess those are just a couple of thoughts I have, um, on it. Uh, Councilor Smallwood?
That's, that's kind of where I'm sitting. Um, I really like the project, but, but I, I'd like to see what you guys can fundraise and where, where you can go with it first. Um, and then come back to us if you have some, some issues or, or problems funding it. Kind of, kind of my thoughts. Um, and I, I, I really think you guys will, I think you'll be able to fundraise a majority if not all of it, uh, based off of the feedback I've heard. So that's, that's kind of my two cents right now.
Yeah, yeah. And I worry people might not contribute to it if they know the money's gonna be there anyways. Um, Councilor Exner?
Uh, this is maybe something for either Becky or Pamela. Uh, did the owner of the building makes, I thought made some sort of, of a comment that, uh, he needed to get support from the city to make sure that this would go forward before he would make this project, uh, okay for him on the, on the walls. Let me, could you understand that for me? Just tell me what the, the building owner is thinking.
Uh, he was planning to paint his building this year. And he, the, the back wall where the mural goes, um, he's willing to work with us on color to paint the building and to allow, because it's going to require a certain amount of paint. He's willing to cover all that. If we wait, then we'll probably be having to raise enough money to paint the building because we won't have the input, I don't think. That's the only, he, he's willing to paint the building, the colors that we wanted, if we do it on his time schedule.
But he's not needing any kind of commitment from us to paint the building, whatever color. My get, my understanding of painting buildings is the color is not the cost, it's the paint and the arms to put up on the wall. So, any color that we kind of suggest, he'd probably be pretty reasonable about. So there's nothing else in that that makes it, um, reasonable that the city would want to commit to this before he puts his paint on?
I would think that if the mural didn't go through, then, um, he would just have an interesting paint job on the back that looks like the ground, you know, the, the sky and the ground, if it didn't go through. But I don't think he would care about that.
Okay. All right, David?
Um, just to let you guys know, uh, Mr. Picking has, um, applied for facade grant for his building to, um, to do the paint job on it. When we talked to him about it, uh, he was, um, talking about doing very neutral colors, white, gray and black, I believe. Um, and, um, but he was talked, he was in the process of talking with Becky about that at the time. Uh, but I just want to make you guys aware that he will be applying for facade grants paint building.
Thanks. All right, I'm gonna start, we gotta start moving on with our agenda, you guys. So, um, I, I see that we have two options in front of us. One is to, um, ask the committee to, uh, commission to go out and start fundraising and see where they get and come back to us, um, uh, with an update, uh, for us to make a further decision or for us to go ahead and just make a decision tonight to do an amount that doesn't exceed, I believe, uh, I believe it was 20,000, but what, what was referenced in the staff report, um, uh, to give that direction move forward. Uh, so I'm looking for a motion or some commentary that quickly leads to some sort of motion.
Um, if we do it that way though, Becky, um, that, that will make this project not happen this year. Is that correct?
Well, I'm not sure that I want to put up $20,000 of my own money just on the possibility that somebody's gonna cover the.
But you would need to, I'm sorry to interrupt Becky, maybe I'm unclear. So you would need to do that to meet Brad's timeline?
Well, the pieces have to begin to be created very soon. You know, the manufacturer of, these are steel, um, silhouettes. That needs to get underway fairly soon. His building needs to be painted before the silhouettes can be applied. And also there's decorative painting involved in that. So, um, if you were to not make a commitment until July, then I could probably still get the job done. But if you go any longer than that, I'm not sure that we would.
Hey, David? Potentially give you until July and see what, what fundraising we can do by then?
We could do that.
David, has Brad applied for a facade grant yet? Or are you, you're just anticipating that he's applying?
He applied quite a while ago for a facade grant. Um, we haven't heard much back. I think it was, I'm gonna say about four months ago. Uh, I've, I've attempted to check back with him a couple of times on it since then. And, um, I haven't heard anything back from him.
So, so Jordan, our, our meeting back is after the, what, the Fourth of July weekend? So we're meeting on July 6th at that point? Uh, so Phil and Chris, not to put you on the spot, we have to be there. Yeah, are you guys available?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I will be there. Absolutely.
Is Council okay with 30, with, was giving it to the July 6th meeting, having an Urban Renewal Board meeting, uh, on July 6th? Is that the direction we want to go or do we want to do? I don't mean to railroad that. So if any councilors want to speak up and talk about doing 20,000 tonight, we can do that too. Not just councilors, Urban Renewal Board members.
Yeah, if that's what it takes to get support, I'm, I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
I think either way, uh, it's gonna be, uh, whatever's left over. If we made the 20 grand available tonight, not to exceed whatever the remainder of the donations would be, it'll probably be almost the same thing as if it would be if we waited until July. So I can wait either way.
Okay. All right. So that's the direction we'll go. I don't think we need a formal vote, um, on that. So we'll, we'll go ahead and wait until our next meeting, uh, to reconvene, uh, this, this board. With that, I will, um, call this meeting, uh, the Urban Renewal Board to adjourn. Thank you, Chris and Phil and Becky and Pamela. Thank you for your presentations. And with that, I am going to reconvene, or I will convene our City Council, uh, work session. Um, Jeff, will you call the roll?
Councilor Pete Sol?
Here.
Councilor Smallwood?
Here.
Councilor Hamblin?
Uh, excuse, uh, excused, excuse.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Lee?
Here.
Councilor Exner?
Here.
Councilor Schultz?
Here.
Mayor Polian?
Here. Okay. So let's start with a agenda review for tonight's meeting. Um, here in our work session, we are going to discuss our Fourth of July fireworks display as well as our community center. Um, I don't know why you had to use those words. Jordan, I'm gonna just, we're gonna discuss our community, uh, center. Uh, then, uh, we will move forward into, uh, public comment and all those great things and into our consent agenda. It's a pretty aggressive, uh, consent agenda, uh, this evening. So I'm gonna go over each item and please tell me if there's any questions or concerns on any of these items. Our City Council minutes, our annual resolution. Uh, so then the Arts Commission and Library Board term adjustments. And then the, um, grant agreement, uh, for our SAM, um, Transit Department to receive, uh, COVID-19 relief funds. Okay, great. Uh, we then, under new business, have a quasi judicial, um, hearing on an appeal for the Sandy Vault, um, development. Any questions on that before we go into it tonight? Okay. Um, and we will then do our reports and then we have a work session, um, later, uh, today, uh, at the end of the meeting on the, uh, Gunderson Road, um, development agreement we're in the middle of, this was in some SDC, um, changes and stuff into our code. Is there any questions on that? Okay. So with that, let's get into our Fourth of July fireworks display, uh, conversation. Uh, that's probably you, Tyler, isn't it?
That's me. Good evening, Council. How are you?
Good.
Um, so I'll keep this pretty brief. I don't think that there's probably a lot to discuss at this point in time. Uh, the vendor that we have historically used, um, for our fireworks display, we entered into an agreement with them at the end of March for the July show. Unfortunately, we didn't have, fortunately at the time, we didn't have any COVID issues. Unfortunately, they quickly developed and, um, we are now where we are. They had given us until June 1st to make a determination as to whether or not we were gonna move forward with the show or make alternative plans. Those alternative plans being canceling the show entirely and losing, uh, the deposit that we have already paid or rescheduling at a later date, which can be flexible given the unknown that we still currently have as to when we'll be able to have, um, gatherings larger than 25 people. Um, the show is also, and this is an important, um, item to note, the show, while it is, you know, sort of put on by the city of Sandy in the sense that staff time is used to facilitate it and make sure that it, um, happens, it is sponsored entirely by Clatton's County Bank. And so I've been speaking with, um, our sponsor at Clatton's County Bank to gauge their interest in continuing to move forward with the July 4th date or to postpone. And, uh, the conversation that I've had, both of us agree that the responsible choice is to postpone it until a later date, um, to ensure that we are, you know, maintaining social distancing, um, not finding ourselves in a position where we, we want to continue to have it on July 4th and, and let's say we have another, um, outbreak, you know, closer to that date and then we have to cancel. Um, it just seems like the wise choice to postpone it for the time being. Um, there is interest in having a show later in, you know, the summer if we find ourselves in a position to do so. Perhaps, you know, a late August show or, you know, Labor Day, uh, fireworks display or something like that. Maybe a random Sunday in September, who knows? Um, but I think that we can all get on board and, in, um, you know, looking to be responsible and respectful of all of our community members, um, and the sponsor and just find a later date that works best for everyone.
Uh, councilors, thoughts? Uh, Councilor Lee?
Yes, I, I support the decision or the recommendation that the bank and Tyler have made. I think it's a reasonable alternative.
I, I mean, I, I'm curious. Thank you for that, Councilor. Uh, you know, I guess part of my thoughts on it is, this is, it feels to me if there's an event that one can socially distance from, it would be fireworks in the air. Um, I, I understand that, um, a lot of people like to gather and have gatherings around the Fourth of July holiday. Uh, believe it or not, I think a lot of that's gonna happen, whether or not we put fireworks in the air, if people go and buy that and do it in their streets and their neighborhoods anyways. Um, I think if you're out in a field and you are in a chair, um, you can socially distance from other people, uh, in a chair. I'm not saying that we open up that park for them, but our parks are currently open, uh, throughout Sandy. Uh, last time I checked, we still live, uh, in a country in which we are, we trust our citizens to be responsible and to do things like socially distance from each other when we give them those facts. Uh, I do have a concern about Clatton's County Bank and them not wanting, um, to move forward. Uh, I've reached out, I have not been able to have a direct conversation, but I have had a conversation, I don't know, probably like a month and a half or so in the past. And I have no reason to doubt anything that Tyler's saying here tonight, um, for both my conversations in the past or what he's saying or any, any of my dealings with Tyler. Tyler's an honest guy. Uh, so, uh, I think that's something that we should seriously consider, that we have the main sponsor, uh, that is, um, uh, you know, kind of thinking twice about this. Uh, that's, I think the total budget's probably, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't exceed 4,000. Uh, maybe it's a little more than that on the fireworks. So this isn't a giant financial ask either. We, we, we could have the city just assume the costs this year and forward their sponsorship onto next year. Uh, so there are options in front of us. Uh, but anyway, so I mean, you know, I'm open. I'm willing to, I, I definitely like always want to have councilors' conversations and, and weigh those thoughts and stuff and come to consensus as a full body. Um, but those are some of my thoughts, you know? It's, I, I could be persuaded both ways. Uh, Councilor Schultz? And then I'll go to Councilor Exner.
I think I'd be more comfortable going with what our sponsor and, um, staff is saying to postpone just simply because we don't, we don't really know what it'll look like a month from now. And, um, I don't want to be in a position of causing someone to lose a bunch of money because we wanted to move forward and then we can't legally or whatever, you know? We don't know what's gonna happen. So I'm good with, um, what the staff suggestion was.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, Council- Thank you. Appreciate it. Counselor Exter, then Peetzel, then Smallwood.
Okay, I'm gonna go out here a little bit of a limb and take some heat probably. I am so tired of canceling meetings. Seems like every time I turn around, there is one more celebration, one more meeting that's out in the open, and we say we're canceling it because of the isolation thing. And I get the part about safety. I get the part about meeting to make sure we don't infect anybody more than we need to. But again, people can choose not to go out and be safe in their own space, or back at their house. All that is really important to be able to keep in mind. But really, are we gonna close down the entire activities for this summer on the fact that there may be a need to be super careful? I'm thinking about how many people have actually been infected in the City of Sandy. I think we're less than 20 in the last couple of months. I'm aware of some people who have been really substantially sick because of this. I get that part. I think it's important for them to be feeling safe. They, the people I talked to, the two individuals that I've talked to that I know that got this, pretty sure they did, are not protecting themselves in any way anymore. They're out there doing things. One has a business that they're actively meeting people, and it just doesn't seem to me like that's an issue that we are more than protecting ourselves. And so I'm also not wanting to go against the CCB. I highly respect their contribution to our fireworks every year. Don't want to go against anything that they would be uncomfortable with, but I gotta tell you, I'm just tired of having the council meetings. I'd love to be able to find something that we could use as an alternative. Maybe a celebration of how our volunteers have done so well, and maybe do something special, maybe at the August timeframe. But boy, I'm really tired of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Peetzel.
Yeah, I was just a little surprised to see this on the agenda, in the fact that, as day before, I think this is one event that can be a social distance. I think it is already in the past, when I visited. I mean, we sit as a family on our own blanket, but even if you didn't do that, you can see it from a mile or two miles away. And so, you know, a lot of people don't even go to a park or go to anywhere. They're watching it from their own backyard, and those type of things. So as any event that we've ever had in the summer, this is probably the most social distance event that we might have in that aspect of things. I do want to say, though, it's not our money that's sponsoring it. It is Clackamas County Bank, and we need to respect that. They're the ones that have been that sponsor, and so I do want to make sure that that point is well understood. I do know, from a personal note, where my wife grew up and was from is Toledo, Oregon. And after I met her, I went down there for some Saturday, Friday night, it was in August, and they had a fireworks show then. And I'm like, what in the world's going on? This is not the Fourth of July. And this is like, but they got it way cheaper to have it not on the Fourth of July, some random day in the summer, and they called it their big event day or whatever. But it was probably the most spectacular show I've ever seen, because they got, you know, all the fireworks for like, you know, 75% off. But that's another story. That's all I could think of when, you know, when we hear about another day. It would have to be, I don't know if another day would ever pop up that would ever work for, you know, maybe New Year's or something like that in the future. But then again, I don't think anybody would be coming out to watch it. You could just watch it from your house or your car, and those type of things. But I do want to respect Clackamas County Bank and follow whatever laws do happen so that we, you know, aren't breaking any laws at that particular time.
Counselor Smallwood's next in the queue. It looks like Tyler has kind of a response. Let Tyler respond, and then we'll go to Counselor Smallwood.
Less of a response and more of just an additional factor that Clackamas County Bank and I had discussed, and that was the fact that every other community that I'm aware of has canceled their show already. And because of that, there is a concern that what our show will attract from neighboring communities. So, you know, it's not just Sandy residents. It's gonna be people from Gresham, Portland, up the mountain, east-west, you know. And so just that added layer of how quickly does this event become the event, and what does that also bring into our town from a safety perspective?
And that was one of my questions I did have. I didn't ask. I apologize for jumping back in. Did Portland close their fireworks? I'm assuming it's in Multnomah County. I'm sure they did. But did Estacada close theirs as well?
That is my understanding. And the feedback that I've gotten from our vendor is that 90, I think she said 98% of their clients have canceled. So I don't know who's in that 2%. They also serve some Washington communities as well, so it could be a couple of communities up in Washington. But that was also about two weeks ago when I spoke with her, and so I don't know if that number has changed to 100% or not.
Very valid point about if we're the one event becoming the event. The only counter I would have to some of what some communities do around Fourth of July being a little different is, is because we have the Mountain Festival, and it could be different this year, but because we've had the Mountain Festival, Fourth of July's always just been a bit of a smaller deal in Sandy, so we have had the parade and the carnivals and everything around it. So it's some, you know, it's just a less logistical event for us. But that is a very strong point. Counselor Smallwood.
So, sitting here doing the math, with where we're at with the phased opening for Clackamas County, July 4th will put us, provided we stay on track, right at Phase 3, day 1 of Phase 3. I live in the neighborhood. The fireworks are shot off right here in my backyard. And I can tell you that this entire street is lined with people, but I've never seen people sitting on top of each other in groups of 25 or greater. I'm kind of with Carl. This is becoming a kind of a hot topic for me. With everything being canceled, there is nothing to look forward to. It just keeps continuing and continuing, and I think it would be a great win for us to do the Fourth of July. And again, I guess I'm just confused at how fireworks causes people to congregate in small groups, where we as a government need to regulate them. You know, I think this is one event where people can social distance. We can keep the school grounds closed. Obviously, they're gonna continue to most likely be closed, and allow people to view it from their rooftops, or the backseat of their, you know, the back of their truck, or, you know, the roadways. Counselor Peetzel said this is something that you can see for miles away. I just, I guess I'm just really confused as to why these types of events at this stage need to be canceled.
And with all respect to Clackamas County Bank, and this could be wrong, Tyler, so please let me know if I'm wrong on the logistics here. But I mean, for all intensive purposes, this is a City of Sandy event that they sponsor, and I say that because we book the fireworks, we deal with the logistics, and then my understanding is we just get, we basically get reimbursed for the sponsorship. And if that's what it is, basically it's dealing with our title sponsor, not a separate organization that runs an event in our town, right?
So we deal with the coordination and implementation of it. The Clackamas County Bank reimburses us for the cost of the show, which this year is shoot, either 9,500 or 9,750. I don't have the...
So the four must have been when we were talking, and you said we'd lose 50% or something like that if it got canceled, or anyway.
I'm not sure where the four came from. But, you know, and I'd like to be clear too, that this was not Clackamas County Bank approaching us requesting to, you know, push it out. This has been a joint effort in communicating regularly with Clackamas County Bank on the upcoming event, and both, you know, an internal sort of recommendation from me thinking that was the smart thing to do, and having agreement from Clackamas County Bank's representatives.
He moved out of Sandy. Doesn't have Sandy now.
Yeah, darn it.
Did I cut out?
Yeah, but you're back now.
Where did I leave off?
You were basically talking about it being a joint conversation between you and Clackamas County Bank.
Oh, thank you. So it was a joint conversation between Clackamas County Bank and myself, thinking this was, you know, the prudent thing to do, and, you know, to keep our community as safe as possible with the uncertainty of what the governor's orders would bring next, and what other, you know, circumstances may pop up in Clackamas County over the next month.
I saw Counselor Exter, and then I saw Counselor Schultz.
So a couple things. Was the reasoning for the CCB canceling, because we came to them and said, you know, this looks like it's gonna be in the middle of our isolations thing, and I really wouldn't want to make anybody concerned, and they kind of decided that they wanted to kind of come along with us. And is that the way it was presented, or was it they came to us and said, oh, this is really looking unsafe. Don't feel comfortable in committing our dollars. And then the other one is, I think it was Counselor Jeremy Peetzel said that their economics was a whole lot better if they waited until August. Would it be a whole lot better if we were the only 1% that fired off our rockets in Fourth of July versus everybody else? Have you checked into that?
So our contract is our contract, so if we reschedule, no matter what the date is, it's the amount that we agreed to in that contract. So just shy of $10,000.
We'd lose 4 grand if we didn't do it in July.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Lose the 4 grand if our deposit, though, right?
We'd lose our, we will lose our deposit if we cancel the show entirely. If we reschedule, there is no financial loss whatsoever. And then to answer your first question, this has been a conversation that Clackamas County Bank and I have been having, you know, ongoing. So there was no no point in time where the bank came to us and said that we'd like to cancel. It's just been, you know, we're gonna wait and see how things are going. Is Clackamas County open? Is Clackamas County closed? What are other, you know, cities doing? What are other communities doing as far as, you know, other types of events? So, you know, City of Sandy's programming's canceled, you know, throughout the summer. Clackamas County Bank's other fundraisers and items that they do are canceled for the foreseeable future as well. You know, it just, it seemed like an appropriate topic to bring to council to get your feedback. And that's just where we're at right now.
Yeah, great point. And the reason Clackamas County's wrapped into this is because they've always been such an outstanding community partner that sponsors everything, right? So of course they're wrapped into this. Bethany, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to just be a little bit annoying about legal stuff here. And Phase 3, I don't think is gonna be starting anywhere near the beginning of July. Jan, you can jump in here if I'm wrong, but I know that Phase 1 was supposed to be three weeks. But isn't it still that Phase 3 won't be until there's like a cure or something? Like, we're talking a while still for Phase 3. Is that correct? You're muted, Jan. Can you jump?
We just have to be in Phase 2 for 21 days before we can be in 3. We haven't even gotten out of 1 yet. So it's a ways out there. And also, the governor will have to make some recommendations about what does happen in 3, and when 3 happens. If the cases go down, at one point she talked about if there's medication or a vaccine, so we really don't know where it is.
Okay, thank you.
Unless Jordan knows more from the call on Friday?
No, that's pretty much it. At this point, we don't have any guidance on 2 or 3, and what the guidance might be, or what they're considering. I mean, obviously, talking about large gatherings increasing, but I mean, I think the conundrum here is how do you hold an event that you can, you know, have some insurance that people will practice safe physical distancing? And, you know, I mean, if the council direction is to hold this, yeah, we'll look, we'll look for a way to communicate that and hold an event that, you know, people are either to stay in their car. We have a designated areas where they can get out, you know, put up their chairs and watch the show and get out. I mean, a lot of traffic control and that sort of thing will have to occur. The benefit of our show that may be different than other cities is that we don't have any, you know, coordinating festivals at the same time. We don't put on a concert or, you know, carnivals or anything at that same time because of the Mountain Festival and stuff. So we don't have to worry about that sort of gatherings going on at the same time, that this can be a, you know, a show of fireworks, and people can promptly, you know, go home after that and head to bed. So, I mean, I think there is, there's just a, you know, a handful of cities that are still proceeding, kind of with those thoughts in mind. I think a lot of cities have decided to cancel just because, you know, for them, it's a big event. It draws a lot of crowds into a certain, you know, confined area. You know, it is outdoors, which is beneficial. It's not a big indoor event, which is, of course, worse for transmission of the virus. And for other cities, it's also the calculation of, well, you're canceling every other event. You're gonna hold this one. Why can't you hold other events? And what makes this one different? And that's where we really have to be clear about what the, you know, guidelines are, what the rules are. If you're gonna attend the Fourth of July event, here's the things that we need you to do to do it safely. And of course, it's gonna be really hard to police that, but, you know, we expect people to be personally responsible for maintaining distances, wearing face coverings if they are within, you know, six feet of each other and things like that. So just some food for thought.
Counselor Smallwood had a hand up, and Exter, and then I saw Lee.
Yeah, I was just gonna clarify, Bethany. I see where you're coming from. We're just, we're being told kind of on my end that all of the phases right now are being looked at at 21-day intervals. So if we look at, if we look at first phase at 21 days, which there's nothing currently to make us think Clackamas County won't move into the second phase, then that's right about, I don't have my calendar in front of me at the moment, but I think that's somewhere around the 15th of June. And then the July 4th would be, again, provided that everything stays on track, there's always a chance that, you know, that we don't. It would be, it would actually fall directly on July 4th. So just wanted to clarify that with you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
I think I'm at Counselor Exter, and then Lee.
Yeah, people are gonna do what they're gonna do. I mean, looking at all these violent or nonviolent protests that are happening all through the United States right now, people are just, you're not gonna stop them no matter what. So I think if they're gonna be described that this is a situation where the City of Sandy can go forward on a Fourth of July and have a celebration that we kind of come to expect, and our great, I'd say great companion, partner in the CCB that has done this for so many years, can get a lot of publicity out of this. I think this is really an opportunity for the City of Sandy to kind of put themselves on the map about this. And I tell you, when I go out and watch the fireworks, even when it was done over by where the current city sheds are right now, people were spread out, finding ways to stay apart. Family units were staying close together to some to spread. But they were really spread out. And I just think this would be an opportunity for us to show how we could be a kind of example of doing things that would be smart, would be reasonable, and do something outdoors that will make some folks kind of pick up our own citizens, the idea that we are concerned about. And finally, we've been struggling a little bit, at least from my mind, and some of the feedback I've been getting about how we've been putting ourselves out there. Jordan mentioned some of that in his conversation about how the perception is, is that we're doing things that put people into risk. And I really hope that if we were to go forward on this, we could find a way to tell people this is not what we're trying to do. This is what we're trying to do is to make a celebration, recognize that this is our Fourth of July celebration. We want people to be safe and take safety precautions, and we'll do maybe some extra things ourselves. I don't know. What would that be? Hand out masks, make sure that we put spaces between folks on the streets and such. I don't know. But it seems to me that we should be really looking at finding a way to make sure that the word gets out that we want this to be a great celebration, to celebrate our Fourth of July, and that Sandy does that, but that we really want it to be a safe celebration. So my two cents.
Thank you. Counselor Lee.
Yeah, I'd like to know what our city attorney thinks about the liability related to this, and what the chief feels about how he would be able to control whatever occurs.
I see both those individuals on here. Chief Roberts, and it looks like David heard you. David, so I'll let you go first, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't know that the, the issue of liability with respect to having an event like this is something I'd want to look at, obviously, a little bit more closely. The governor's order or orders has provisions that sort of address the limits of what a locality could do in a situation like this for an event like this. And some of that is, I wouldn't say hands-off, but it may not be the same type of liability that would accrue to, let's say, a private party if you're hosting a gathering that would be larger than, you know, 25 people. I think, Councillor Lee, is that where your question is going to ultimately in terms of a large group of people? Okay, so, yeah, I'd want to, I'd want to take a little bit more of a detailed look at that, but I think if there were, you know, guidelines that were set up, you know, and what I'll call an attempt, if you will, a good faith attempt, that would have distancing in place to comply with that, generally speaking, I think the city would probably be okay from a liability point of view. But it's certainly something that, this is actually something we sort of anticipated in terms of people talking about these events, but we haven't actually had a chance to go and sort of drill down on it. And so much of it depends upon, you know, where people are, where, where communities are in terms of the various phases. So my sense is that done carefully and done with an eye towards the limits on, the requirements for distancing, it's doable.
Thank you, David. And then Chief Roberts?
Yes, hi, everyone. Councillor Lee, thank you, David, for explaining that portion of, I think the, the main concern would be where we were at and what the governor's orders are at that time. As far as controlling that event, that would be, in the past, it has not been difficult for us to do. Typically, I have two people that are assigned that whole day, so we have a little bit of overtime, which is in our, which we put in our budget every year. And that's how we do that. We have a couple of people assigned all, you know, throughout the day and in the evening hours. And from the location that it's at, it's pretty easy for us to control that. Depending on how many, you know, stipulations you put on the social distancing and things of that nature, if we are going to be asked to control that, I would say that would be very difficult for us. Now, are we going to go in and walk around and make sure everybody's six feet apart? No, I don't think, I don't even think that's possible. I think Councillor Exner touched on that, is people are being pretty responsible about these, these types of things. And if it was, if David thought that this would not create some kind of an issue with liability, then as far as our agency is concerned, our department, I think that we could handle that.
Okay, thank you. So with that, that was who was in the queue and the question. So I'm going to force the issue here a little bit, reading the tea leaves, and I don't mean to call people out, but it seems to me that Councillor Schultz and Councillor Lee have some reservations about moving forward with this. And it appears to me that Councillors Smallwood, Exner, and myself are more apt to do it. Councillor Peitzel, I don't mean to put it on you, it's just we're kind of through that point in the meeting. And if I've misrepresented anybody's views, please do speak up, of course. I'm just trying to kind of move us forward here.
You know, I think I stated it, that I think that fireworks show that you can see from miles away in different directions is in itself a social distance in itself. I wouldn't want to, if the governor came down and said, you know, that's not, not allowed to do something like that, then we need to follow the governor's rules on that in doing that, for sure, right? By no means want to think that we're going outside of that. But I do believe that, you know, it's a social distance in itself. You can watch from your front yard, especially over in that left neighborhood area where it's going to be. So that's my take on it.
Thank you. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. Jordan, do you need something, would you like me to go to a roll call vote? Or do you believe that you have direction? I'm good with doing either one.
I mean, roll call on?
A vote to have the 4th of July deal? Or do you feel like you've got direct?
I mean, I think a clear vote would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
In this, we lose our deposit, is what we lose if we don't tell them by July 1. If we go forward and it gets postponed, are we able to postpone it to a future date in that year and lose deposit? Or are we just out of luck altogether if we don't make a decision tonight?
So if we choose to just postpone to a later date, no financial loss whatsoever. There's only a loss if we cancel entirely. I don't know what the parameters are around, let's say, we decide to move forward and then in two weeks from now, the governor says you can't have this. I would assume our vendor would be, you know, willing to work with us, given that that's a circumstance outside of our control, but I don't know what that looks like entirely. And a situation like that is not really laid out very clearly in our contract, because I don't think there's really been a time other than when there's, you know, a forest fire concern, that there's ever been a time that the show has been canceled. So I would have to reach out to them to get further clarification.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, we, Carl, Councillor Exner, you have a comment before I go to vote?
No, I was going to make a motion.
I guess we should. Yeah, go ahead and make a motion. Let's do it that way. Yeah, thank you.
I move that we go forward with the 4th of July fireworks celebration. And I guess it would be contingent on the governor's response. And I'll leave it at that.
I have a motion by Councillor Exner and a second by Councillor Smallwood to proceed with the 4th of July festivities in the City of Sandy, subject to some kind of response from the Governor Attorney General's office. Jeff, will you do a roll call vote?
Councillor Peitzel?
Yes.
Councillor Smallwood? Councillor Hamblin?
Yes.
Councillor Lee?
No.
Councillor Exner?
False.
Councillor Schultz?
No.
Mayor Pulliam?
Yes.
I have five yeses and two noes.
Thank you, Jeff. Motion carries. Moving forward on the work session agenda, Jordan on the community center port day.
Portico.
Portico repair project.
Yeah.
That's the word of the week, portico.
That's, that's definitely David's word. It's a little flair for.
Kelly's word, that's not my word.
Kelly, okay, let's give credit where credit's due.
That's right.
I stumbled on it, too. Well, we can make this pretty short. David can give the staff report, but this is regarding, you know, a repair project for an important part of our community center, the senior center, that we've started to hear about and kind of learn more about this year as we did our facilities assessment and then another assessment on some rotting beams. Really, the stability is getting to be a concern for safety and a risk that we're not really comfortable with. So David worked with a design firm to get some, you know, preliminary estimates on what that might take to fix. So he'll walk through what that project is. One of the reasons we're bringing it to you in a work session is the potential of it being over $100,000, but also introducing sort of a project that, like I said, will be one of the higher priorities on our facilities assessment, which we just completed and plan to bring forward to the council at a future work session, I think, this month. And so the timing on this is interesting. Ideally, we'd bring the facilities assessment prior to bringing any projects forward, but given that the community center is closed, there's an opportune time right now to conduct any work so that we're not impacting, you know, the normal business there as much as possible. So I'll turn it over to David for his staff report. Thanks.
Yeah, and I initially wanted to bring this to you guys a little bit earlier, but COVID hit. And so in dealing with that, I kind of pushed this back a little bit on my schedule. So I apologize to Tanya most, first and foremost. I've been promising her this for a while. So, yeah, so because of the issues that we saw over there in the, the damage to some of the structural beams over there, we had Axis Design take a look at that and do a structural analysis for us. They used Harper &amp; Hough Peterson Reg Jellis, which is a structural engineering firm that took a look at it. And what we got back was the portico is in fact failing. There is significant damage to all structural beams, including the support posts. In addition, when this was first built, and Tim Brunner's on the line from Axis, maybe he can speak to this a little bit more in detail later, but it doesn't seem like the, the structure was properly engineered at the time or engineered at all. And it wasn't properly protected from the elements either. There was no, no proper coatings put on it. So because of that, water seeped into a good, all of the structural beams, and that's why we are where we are today. The structure, let's see, so this is also part of the facilities inventory that you guys are going to hear at your next meeting. We brought this in front of you tonight for two reasons. One, because of the significant safety issues involved. And two, because as the senior center's closed right now, we would kind of like to get started on this as quickly as possible and take advantage of the fact that there's nobody other than staff accessing the building. This is, this project, when complete, will probably require two to three months to get fully completed. And the south access to the building will be inaccessible at that time. So also, there are some other known ADA issues over there involving this structure. And I don't know if it's, I believe it's state statute requires that 25% of all project costs be put towards ADA improvements. There are certainly enough ADA improvements for us to work on over there. We identified five or six of them while we were over there. So because of the, the safety issues, and it has been explained to us that this structure is in danger of failing during an earthquake or during a strong storm, particularly a windstorm. It was not designed to handle those loads. So in, in, in doing the repairs here, we would get the structure re-engineered and make sure that that is an issue going forward. We're also talking about adding minimal Sandy-style elements. I think only two items were identified. One was the crossing beam there being a more robust beam than we would normally put there and to put stone wrapping around the footings of the two support posts. Those are the only two ADA upgrades, or I'm sorry, not ADA, Sandy-style elements that I can identify in the project. That does allow us to use urban renewal funds for this project if we wish, up to 41,500 of that could be taken from a facade. So that would be consistent with the projects that we did for the City Hall remodel project, which was, I believe, about $180,000. And for the painting of the police department, which we're currently undergoing right now, I believe the work will start on that in a couple of days. So we've identified, so urban renewal funds could be used for this. We can also use building maintenance funds or, or any combination of the two to fund this project. And we're, we, staff would appreciate some guidance as to how we should go about doing that if you choose to move forward.
Thank you, David. Thoughts?
I mean, it's, Councillor Peitzel?
Oh, go ahead. I don't.
You unmuted, man. You unmuted.
Man, you gotta be careful on that stuff. No, I appreciate the timing of this. I mean, it seems a little odd, but, you know, the world is a little odd right now in that we are closed and let's take advantage. I wish there were some more projects out there that I know are coming later in the summer. And it's like, why didn't we take, not in the city, but in the county, why don't we take advantage of some of the roadwork now when, and I think some projects have been that way. So taking advantage of the time when no one's in the building or very little use, I think is appropriate in going forward with this. And so I'd hate to see the failure of that and have someone getting hurt. And so I appreciate you guys taking that inventory and identifying this and getting it done quickly as possible on that. I guess the question is, you know, where you brought up the funding on this. I know I said just here a couple items ago, you know, be careful, you know, about going to the urban renewal bucket every time. I do see the Facility Maintenance Internal Service Fund. It's $340,000, which, I mean, can't even repair a roof sometimes. But I'd like to ask Tyler, because I believe we started this fund back when Seth Atkins was the Finance Director. How much are we putting into that fund? I'm saying we need to spend the money. I'm not, I'm just questioning, I'm just, I just want to understand, how long has it taken us to save that money out of the budget every year to get to $340,000? We do need to do the project. I just want to be curious on that.
So we do $110,000 per biennium into the Internal Service Fund. And for biennium? I'm sorry?
For biennium, so it took.
For biennium.
So it took over four years.
Yes. And to date, there.
Yeah.
It's taken six years.
Five or six, yeah.
To date, there's been no projects funded out of that fund, other than the facilities assessment that was just completed, that you'll hear more about at the next council meeting. Yeah.
And Councillor Exner?
Sure. I'm also very in favor of this thing, especially with the empty building or nearly empty building and making it, take advantage of that. We should be doing that. When it comes to the financing, I guess that's the problem that I just see us coming to a decision on. It seems that either the facade program would naturally be available for this. But I think in terms of the, the ADA and the other things that are not reasonable to go underneath the facade program, was that I'll come out of the owner of the owner's pocket. And in this case, it's the city's Building Improvement Fund. And so I think for me, there looks like whatever it was that would normally be covered for the facade program would, should go to that. I like the idea of putting in as many of the Sandy-style elements as we can and maybe putting rest of the bulk of it into the, if there's some structural, if there's some ADA, that would have to come out of our pocket.
So Councillor Exner, just clarifying, Councillor Lee, you're next in the queue. So are you suggesting then that we treat this like a normal, kind of a normal facade program, but we treat the city ourselves like we're the business owner? So we kind of say we would dedicate the facade urban renewal fund what we normally would towards this kind of a project and then have the city donate out of the, you know, the current fund that's being proposed as much as your typical business would out of, is that, that's what you're suggesting, correct?
And that's exactly what I'm proposing. And I think it's, it's a fairness issue for, you look at some of the businesses who've had similar programs where they've got facade money to fix the, shut the front of their buildings and anything that's constructive, that's engineering, ADA, those kind of things have always been in the, in the owner's pocket.
Yeah, yes, I like it. Councillor Lee?
Yeah, I don't think it's a question of whether or not we do it. I think we have to do it. It's accident waiting to happen. I wonder how much it would take out of the facade.
I can answer that. Assuming that the construction costs are in or around $100,000, or let's just assume they come in exactly at $100,000 or more, the facade program contribution would be 41,500.
So David's better at math than I am.
I've calculated a million times, that's all.
Kelly, that's why you had your head up.
I just wanted to mention one thing, that, just to remind you that one of the actual, like, seven main things that the facade program, when it was originally established 11 years ago, if you look at the guidelines and what the money can be used for, one of the seven main things is actually ADA improvements to the building entrance. So while some of the parking lot issues that have been identified by Mr. Brunner probably wouldn't be able to be contributed through. So while some of the parking lot issues that have been identified by Mr. Brunner probably wouldn't be able to be contributed through. Facade grant, the the threshold and some of the stuff right at the building entrance would be. Urban renewal applicable to the facade grant program. We've, we've used the top grade ADA access and at least probably a dozen buildings around Sandy.
Thank you. So I would like to say that I think some of this is staff responding to. Voiterous members of council such as myself complaining about returning to the urban renewal fund over and over and over again. Counselor Pete's will be in my tag partner on that, you know, just mentioned it earlier, so. I I do like kind of the compromise that's being brought forward though. That Carl's bringing in up, which is kind of treating this as if it's a private, you know, treating this in the same fashion that we would treat a business. So here's where I'm at on it. I'm a little worried with the upgrade when we've been spending the last year talking about a new community. Senior center down the road, right? And so I think we've in the back, we've got at least weigh that opportunity down the road. When we're talking about this, but at the same time, we all know that that's that project is struggling. Right now, to say the very least, right? So we're going to need this community center for a while. Does anyone have any ideas of what this facility could be? When it's done being a community center, senior center, I mean, maybe it becomes like a BF W hall or something, but. The only reason I bring that up is is counselor Pizzol and I've had a lot of conversations in the past about using urban renewal to kind of flip buildings, right? To go in, go to a building, a decaying building, rehab it to a use that the community, you know, really wants. And then selling it to private development like a brewery or something to go into a building after we improve it with urban renewal funds and we'd use those funds. And now we flipped it. We're getting more money back than what we invested in it, right? So I'm kind of thinking about this project is, could we do that with this, right? Invest in it and then kind of flip it later. I just worry though, knowing that building the way I do. I don't know what we'd be flipping it into, right? So that's where I struggle. Counselor Pizzol.
Yeah, I know in the past, a couple of years ago, at least, Quackamas County was interested in that building. At least that's what we were told. For their facility, if we were to move over to the community campus. So I think there are some uses for that. You know, daycare, other things, let the market figure that out. I, you know, initially had some concern. You know, about spending money into it if we were going to move, because that's what that's the idea is. But then I thought about it is when we do. Sell it, that these amenities would be done and should be done for whatever building that was there and in part of the Sandy style. And you know, can we get some more of Sandy style into that building too? It's not designed as the most attractive building, no offense, Tanya. You adopted it, but you know, it just is what it is. But I think, you know, this would help. And then, you know, reading through this, I'll just give a personal example over the weekend. I was on the other side of the mountain over at Pine Hollow. I don't know if you know where that is, but you guys had a storm here. I got a phone call from my parents saying the wind is like crazy, that over there it literally rolled a roof up on. Place called Lucky's is not so lucky anymore, but literally the wind rolled that roof up and so. Hearing that and then reading this going, we need to do something now on that, that that part of it. But I do think that the value putting into it, when we do go and sell that in the future, when we move. I think it's just a matter of when. It's just, our city's too big for that space. That it'll, it will turn into something else, so.
Okay, I know we're, Counselor Exner, I mean, go to you, but I'm hearing broad support because we got it, we got more agenda tonight, right? We're already way over here. I'm hearing broad support to move forward. In a concept that Counselor Exner laid out earlier, where we use urban renewal for some of the facade improvement. And use our facility maintenance fund for the rest. Counselor Exner, I'll go to you and I hope is, is you're gonna say what you're gonna say and it's gonna end with a motion of some sort.
I'm like even better. I moved that we fixed this facility using the. The slice that I just discussed earlier about using it as if it was presented from a developing private company. Period.
Well, second.
And we, can I make a comment before? Do we need to open up urban renewal? Committee to assign funds for that, or can that just be applied? Can we apply for that out of it like the other rest everyone's doing, so.
I saw, I saw Doof and I'm mute at the same time. I, my recommendation would just be to apply it for it. That's what we did with the police station, the fire station. And several other public buildings, but David, if you have another recommendation, please.
Yeah, I would, I would just, just do it consistent with how you've done it before and and that approach is just fine. It'll require the, the, the urban renewal board at some point presumably to officially authorize that. As ridiculous as that may seem.
I can work with Tanya to get that done.
Okay, great. Jeff, can you do a roll call vote?
I think we need, I think we need a second mayor unless I missed it.
Yeah, Jan seconded the motion.
Okay, excellent. Counselor Pitzold.
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood.
Yeah.
Counselor Hamblin.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Exner.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yeah.
Mayor Polian.
Yes. Thank you. I am going to adjourn our work session and we will convene our scheduled city council meeting. In five minutes at seven forty-two. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
And to the republic. For which it stands, one nation. With liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence for the tragic death of George Floyd over the last several days. Thank you, counsel. Trying to start off with just a couple remarks about the death of George Floyd, George Floyd and some of the resulting aftermath. Obviously, our nation, our state, our communities have a long ways to go and. And race relations and communications in this country. I am very proud of our police department and all the work that our, that our officers have made over the last several years in community policing and. And all the work that they do in our community. Obviously, there's a lot of work that all of us in all our communities throughout this country still have. Left to do. I would say that right now is an important time for all of us to be talking to. Our children. I know that I have sat down and talked to my two little girls about a lot of what they're seeing on TV and the news right now. I think it's important to talk about the events that happened. It's important to talk about. The history of race relations in our country and where we currently stand. It's important to talk about the protests and and the resulting anger frustration that's come out in the ensuing days. As well as some of what happens in our nation, where there's some of us that go less peaceful and mainstream. During a protest, which we've seen in some of our communities. All of this is a lesson. I think that, that we all need to be talking about, talking to our children about. And really just as a community coming together and and talking to one another. Dialogue in times like these are very important and dialogue needs to result in action. Because the lack of action is what results in, in tragic events like what we saw. So anyways. With that, I will go ahead and move forward with our council agenda for this evening. I always start with a review of what we will be doing. We always start. Well, we always start with a roll call, but I'll go ahead and do the review and then we'll do a. Roll call attendance. We start with changes to the agenda. We then get into public comment during the public comment portion. Please feel free to address counsel on any items facing counsel. Either tonight or in the future. If you would like to provide testimony tonight on the quasi judicial hearing that we're having. On the Sandy Bolt appeal, that would be the time to do it during that public hearing. So please do not speak during the public comment, but wait for that hearing to open and we'll have a public comment portion of that hearing. Other than that, the public comment portion of our regular agenda is when you would speak. We'll move on to our consent agenda. We'll go to new business and have that quasi judicial hearing. We'll then hear from our. City manager Jordan Wheeler, have our counselor committee and council reports. And then look to adjourn and afterwards we will be having a work session on. Our development, a future development agreement we're talking about with the, with Gunderson Road. With that, Jeff, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pizzol.
Here.
Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Hamblin.
Here.
Counselor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Polian.
Here. With that, is there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the public comment portion of tonight. Again, please note there will be a separate opportunity for public comment on the Sandy Bolt appear, appeal later this evening during our quasi judicial hearing. But this time, the council welcomes your comments. The instructions are located on our agenda. But if you are participating online, please click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone, dial star nine in order to raise your hand. And wait to be recognized. And with that, Tyler, not Tyler, Jeff. Do we have anyone who would like to do public comment?
Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, moving forward to our consent agenda, do I have a motion to adopt our consent agenda?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Pizzol and a second by Counselor Schultz that we adopt the consent agenda. Jeff, will you please do a roll call vote?
Counselor Pizzol.
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood.
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Exner.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Mayor Polian.
The mayor froze.
Is he at Sandy? Did he get a Sandy? You can't just make fun of me for not having Sandy net.
Yeah, yeah, I knew that was coming. Oh, good, you're back, mayor.
Was I the, was I the only one that got kicked out or did everybody?
You're the only one, man.
What happened? Did we?
Yeah, I didn't hear your vote, mayor. How was, how did you vote?
You know, it's, it's pretty controversial. A hard eye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Moving forward, we're moving on to new business. You guys haven't gone ahead and handled that quasi judicial hearing without me, have you? No, you have not.
Oh, but we bought a new bus.
Yeah. Okay, so I will. Open this hearing, a public hearing. Let's see here, open a public hearing for Land use file number twenty sixteen. Twenty zero one six AP at seven fifty-two. Any extensions from the hearing body?
None. No, none.
Conflicts of interest from the hearing body.
None.
Okay, I'm now going to pull all of you for ex parte contact, including any site visits. Any, any, I will start this. Throughout time, I have had a variety of conversations. With Mr. Mark Benson about his investments in his property in our community. All of those conversations have been barely high level, particularly on this proposed project. We have not gotten into the details of his application. And we have really kind of stopped talking about this particular project. Since he went into an application phase, but I did want to mention that I have had. Some conversations with Mr. Benson outside of this public hearing. Any other ex parte contact, Counselor Pizzol?
Yeah, I met with Mr. Benson as well last August at his property there and walked around. Soon to be opened tractor supply in the AMPM in the property.
Thank you. Counselor Exner.
Yeah, I also talked with Mr. Benson last fall and talked about. At that time, the opening of several things, including the. The bolt, but mostly it was big picture. I have walked the facility more than a couple of times recently too.
Thank you. Counselor Smallwood.
I'm in the same boat as the other two counselors. I've met with Mr. Benson last fall. Might have been late summer and walked his property with him as well.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz, did I see a hand up?
I have not met with Mr. Benson. We did exchange a couple of emails, but nothing was discussed.
Thank you. Okay. With that, is.
Mayor, I think Counselor Hamblin has his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I count for Hamblin.
Same as Bethany, exchanged emails. I've done a site visit, but I have not met with Mr. Benson.
Thank you.
And mayor, if I may, one quick question I have too, because there has been a few iterations of. Of the Sandy Vault project, specifically with respect to this appeal. Has anybody had any recent? You know, conversations or ex parte contacts? Because some of those obviously go back a ways before the appeal was filed.
No, I have not spoke with him since last August.
Either.
I have none.
Mr. Benson did inform me that he went in front of planning and that he appealed to counsel. We did not talk about the application or any of the details of the, within the application.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I am calling for any challenges to the hearing body. If you wish to bring a challenge, please click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized.
Okay, mayor, we do have one raised hand.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Walker, you should be able to unmute yourself. Please state your name and address for the record. I'm gonna try to, no, there you go.
One of these days I'll learn Zoom. One five not Kathleen Walker, one five nine two zero Southeast Bluff Road. I sent you all a. It's an attachment that's actually in the city. It's on the city website there as part of the agenda packet. And it has some pictures in there that I would like to refer you to. But I would like you to deny the appeal, but I'm sorry.
Kathleen, I apologize. Are you preparing to provide testimony on this application or did you have an objection to any members of the hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I messed up. I'm sorry, Stan.
No, no problem. Okay, no problem, Kathleen. Okay, we will call on you again when we're to that moment of of the hearing. Thank you. Okay, so then I'm going to again pause for any challenges to the hearing body.
Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, and then I apologize, I kind of skipped over the moment where we're supposed to challenge each other. So any counselors, would you like to challenge a member of the hearing body? Okay. All right, and so if you wish to testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved. Or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing. Or by the close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designated respond to the issue. You will not be able to appeal the, that decision to the Land use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the appellant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval. With sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue. Recludes an action for damage. recludes an action for damages in circuit court. With that, I believe Emily, you're providing us with the staff report this evening?
Yep, so I'm going to share my screen. And go into the presentation. All right, so tonight we're hearing the Sandy Vault storage major modification appeal. Just a little bit of context, I think you all know where the site is, but right by the tractor supply on the west end of town. It is in the I-1 industrial park zone, which is the same design standards as our C-2 general commercial. Here's a quick site layout of the proposed buildings. There's four buildings. The facades I highlighted there with the red line are the ones that the planning commission was most concerned about. So the north elevation of building one and the south elevation of building four. A little background, so the applicant came through with a designer review request, file 18-047, and that was for self-storage facility with nine requested adjustments, variances, and deviations. This approved by the planning commission, I think probably a little over a year ago. And then more recently, they came back through with file 19-046 for a major modification to the previously approved design review. And that had three additional variance and deviation requests. I'll go into that in a little bit more detail in a second. And then this is file 20-016, and it's appeal, and it is an appeal of the planning commission's decision for that major modification application. So the major modification request that came through before included three, three specific requests. So a special variance to increase the percent of metal siding on all of the buildings. A special variance to reduce the required window coverage on the north elevation of building one and the south elevation of building four. And then a design deviation to reduce the amount of activated frontage on the north elevation of building one and the south elevation of building four, which was actually identified and approved by planning commission in another application and interpretation that predated all of these other applications. I'm not going to go through every facade. I'm going to focus on, again, the north elevation of building one and the south elevation of building four, and I'll go through each of those three requests. So looking at percent metal, the original designer view 18-047 did not have any metal on the north elevation of building one. It was all hardy board siding, aside from the doors to the storage units, which I presume are metal. With the major modification request, the applicant had requested to increase that percent metal to 47%. May actually be higher than that, because I think they were not counting. I think they were counting the entire facade and not excluding the doors or windows or anything. But essentially, it's just that gabled area to the left would still be hardy board, and the rest would all be metal siding. That was the request. On building four at the top, originally, the designer review had 36% metal request, which was a type two adjustment that the planning commission approved with the condition that they have landscape trellises in those, the two areas of metal, which I circled kind of in green where the landscape trellises would go. With the major modification request, you can see the sod looks a little different, but in relation to metal, specifically, the request was to bump that up to 70% metal. So that that whole right-hand side would be metal. Looking at the percent window request, previously in 18-047, they had requested 13% windows on the north elevation of building one. The code requirement is 20%. With the major modification, the request was reduced to 7.3% windows. And again, code requirements 20%. Looking at the south elevation of building four for windows as well, the original request was 20% windows, whereas the code requirement was 30%. Planning commission approved this. But with the with the requirement that they add metal awnings above the windows, and then again, the landscape trellises. That applicant came back with the major modification request in 19-046, and that request was to reduce it to 7.2% windows. Again, the code requirement is 30%. And then the last request with the major modification was to reduce the activated frontage. So in 18-047, the entirety of the north portion of building one was considered activated. That was decided by planning commission again during the interpretation hearing. With file 19-046, major modification, the applicant was requesting to reduce the activated portion of the north elevation of building one to just that area circled in red. So just the far, far left.
Emily, activated, will you take me through that term?
Sure. Activated frontage is basically just, it's a section or a code, and it's designed at kind of pedestrian activation. So it's really just meant to include a primary entrance and to meet the window requirement. So it's kind of a little bit of double up on the windows. And then the planning commission had already, for building one, there is a primary entrance. For building four, there's not, and the planning commission had kind of waived that requirement as part of the original approval.
Thank you.
And then, so the south elevation, building four. So originally, it had, it had, you know, the entirety of the south elevation. And with the modification request, the applicant was requesting, again, just the far left side there to be considered the activated. So again, to meet kind of that, in this case, really just the windows as they were already granted, a variance to not have a door, a primary door there. In addition to those three requests, two variances and the one design deviation, the applicant had also proposed 34 new modular units, but these were not actually reviewed as part of the major modification, because they're not a modification. They would have been a separate designer view, and the applicant did not apply for that. So these weren't reviewed. So just to briefly go over planning commission's decision with regards to the major modification, which is what's being appealed tonight. Again, the 34 new units were not reviewed as part of the application. The request for the special variance to decrease the percent of windows on the north elevation of building one and the south elevation of building four was denied by the planning commission. So the, what was approved with the original design review is still in effect. The applicant's request to further reduce the amount of activated frontage so that only a small portion of the north frontage of building one and a small portion of the south frontage of building four would be considered activated was also denied by planning commission. The planning commission approved a request to increase the percent of metal on the following nine elevations. So again, I didn't show each of these, but the applicant had requested to increase the percent metal on on all of the buildings. So these were the ones that were approved. Most of them are kind of more interior to the site. And then the planning commission reverted back to the previous approval with file 18-047 for the following seven, which notably includes the north elevation of building one and the south elevation of building four. So these, these additional increases in percent metal were not granted with the major modification, and the planning commission wanted to see the original design review upheld.
Emily, Emily, what is, can you go back one slide? What is east elevation, north elevation? What I think about that is where it's placed on the property? What does that mean? Because I obviously don't think that's.
Just so the whichever facade is facing east or north or south or west. So there's four buildings, and then they each have the four facades.
Okay.
So the applicant appealed the planning commission's decision for the major modification. The applicant's appeal narrative cited two sections, 179120B1, which talks about two requirements. And the second, 179120B3F, which requires building materials to turn the corner. Neither section was actually reviewed as part of the major modification application. And the applicant's appeal narrative didn't mention any of the three code sections that were reviewed as part of the major modification application, which again, were the activated fringes, the percent window, and the percent metal. So staff's not really sure what the basis of the appeal is. It seems that the applicant's modification is actually reviewed as part of the major modification. So our staff recommendation is essentially to just sit with one of the two decisions. So at the top, the first, the image, which approved some of the applicant's requests, specifically some of the percent metal increases on some of the facades. The second option would just be to deny the major modification requests as they're not actually in compliance with the design standards of our code, and then just stick with the original design review approval, which already included approval of nine adjustments, variances, and design deviations. And as Kathleen Walker has pointed out, she did submit testimony that I believe is in support of this option. And I'm sure she'll speak to you as well, but I think you are afforded as many.
Thank you, Emily. Is there any questions for staff before we get into the applicant's presentation? Okay. Seeing none, we have provided 15 minutes for the applicant. I'm guessing that is you, Mr. Benson. So you, now you're provided, yeah, Jeff, he needs to be unmuted, I think. And then Mark, I just wanted to remind you that, because this has happened in previous meetings, is that you have 15 minutes. So if you need, you know, Tim or anybody else kind of on your side to speak, 15 minutes is the time allotted, right? So whether it's you or your partners, it's 15 minutes. Just wanted to make sure that was spelled out. With that, Mr. Benson, please state your name and address for the record.
Mark Benson, 655 Waniyala, Honolulu, Hawaii, 96821. And group, I think the smartest thing for me to do is put Tim Bruner in and let him talk about what we've experienced so far and give you reasons for why we're looking for a couple more of these items. So I'll try to mute myself so you don't hear any background noise on my side, and you guys will be able to hear from Tim.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim?
Yeah, hi, my name is Tim Bruner with Access Design Group, 11104 Southeast Stark Street, Portland, Oregon. I will need to have access on my screen. And I hope we can do that.
And you should be able to, Mr. Bruner, at the bottom of your screen, there's a, yeah.
All right. Perfect. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So what I wanted to do briefly is to go through kind of what we're asking for and why we're here today. Also wanted to talk a little bit, just briefly, so city council is kind of aware of the process that we've gone through. We had to go through the land use process several times. And what we're trying to do is get to a building that we feel addresses the code in the, in the industrial zone and the sandy style, but doing it in an appropriate way and not overdoing it. And what I want to do is kind of talk through some of the concerns that we've had multiple times going to the commission and hence the reason why we're here today. Real briefly, some of the things I want to put in people's minds are to think about what the definition of a but a public street means. And the code is pretty clear in section 17.9.120. Talks about articulation of the building, windows, that sort of thing, that a but public streets. So I want to kind of set that in people's minds as just something that we're asking the city, the council here to consider. And making sure that the interpretation of this is appropriate for our site. Our site, as you all know that have been there, sits back from Highway 26 quite a ways. It's blocked by the tractor supply building, which sits up proud of Highway 26, as well as a new kind of larger or pretty large storage building in the back. There's a little coffee kiosk here, and we've got this gas station located right here. The site falls back, these are contour lines, it falls back drastically. And I've got a drawing here to kind of represent what can be seen from Highway 26, which is actually very little. We are showing that we're doing four buildings on the site, not five, as previously mentioned. And as also stated in the public letter that we just received, there's four buildings, there's building one, building two, building three, and building four. This back here represents something we had in our application as a possible future project. There was a desire to create what I would call micro storage units for people, almost like a locker for skis and people that would use outdoor recreation. This would be a stop off for that. That was not approved, that would be a future thing. We understand that, just planting a seed so you can understand that we've found a business case for something like that, we would be back at a later time to address that. In particular, what I want to talk about tonight is building one and that north facade. It's the facade that faces north on the site. And I also want to talk about building four, which is down here along Industrial Way. Industrial Way comes down here, there's an auto body shop, a wetland creek that comes through here, and it dead ends right here. So I want to talk about the south facade of building four. The other thing that I want to mention, because people have talked about metal siding and the amount of metal siding that we have here, and there's been allusions to what metal siding we're proposing. And we are proposing a high-quality horizontal siding that is painted to match the colors so that it fits in with the sandy style. This is not a corrugated vertical metal type siding you'd see on a pole barn. That's not what we're planning to do here. The metal siding is chosen because more economical. It looks very nice, has nice shadow lines, and that was included with our original, with our latest application. I'm going to move through now to the next slide, which is an aerial view of this. And what I want to share with you is the extent that Mark has gone to hiring us, but multiple times going through this process to try to show and make sense to the planning commission staff what we're trying to convey and what we're trying to do. And we acknowledge that Champion Way along here is certainly a pedestrian route, more of a pedestrian route, I would argue, than Industrial Way is, because it is a dead end. But we address and believe that Champion Way is the main focus of this building and of this site. Hence the reason why we put the office space and the public portion of the building along that behind the gas station. This building, too, sits quite low. As you can see here, this is a site section. So if you look at Highway 26, this is altoscale, this is tractor supply building. This is the barn building, storage building out back. There's a three-foot high, I'm sorry, 42-inch high guard rail here. And then there's a large retaining wall here, and then the site kind of comes down. This is actually cut through back here on the site. And although the grades here are not quite as great, they still drop a good eight or so feet from this access drive down, and it keeps stepping down. So building two is lower than building one and such down to the green space. So what we're trying to show is, this is really not a prominent location for the entrance to the city of Sandy. The prominent location is tractor supply and is the gas station. And we fall behind this really tall retaining wall and along behind these buildings. And it steps down here along this roadway or frontage road, which is a private drive. This is a view of what it looks like from Champion Way. Coming shortly, delay, sorry about that. And so this shows what the public plaza area will look like and the sandy style effects that we're putting onto the building for awnings, glazing, that sort of thing. We need to be thoughtful about this. This is a storage building, which is allowed outright in this zone. And the code doesn't always work with the uses that are allowed. And this is a problem we've found on multiple projects that I've done. And so what we're trying to do is come up with a plan that allows the appropriate use for the site and also blends with the sandy style. So this shows that what we're planning to do in the front is sandy style, and it has windows and glazing that face Champion Way. This is actually the grade of Champion Way. You can see how steep it is as you drive down. This is building one with the entry and the. This is building one with the entry and the plaza space out front. It'll step down, be very pleasant for people that walk with these nice planters and such. And then this is building two. And then it gets down to the creek. So you can kind of see how the building has the awnings. It has the glazing facing and abutting the public way. What I'm going to show you now is the facades of what was approved at the last planning commission hearing, which basically what they did is they went through each facade, facade by facade. And I want to point out just a note about that. It was actually nice that during that process, when it actually, instead of closing the public portion, they actually allowed me to stay on and be a participant in the process as the planning commission was going through, making their decisions. So I would be there to be able to answer questions. Multiple times questions came up and I was not allowed to answer those questions. I was not allowed to give input, which was a little frustrating because I am the architect and probably in the room, the most knowledgeable about the buildings. At one point, I even tried to butt in to say I have an idea and was just disregarded. I think that's just a situation that maybe should be looked at for the planning commission. These are people that volunteer amazing amount of their time, not disrespecting them at all or trying to. I just want to make a note of that so that we would not have maybe had to be here tonight. So just a consideration. This top was what was approved two planning commission hearings ago and was was gone back to and approved this last one. The view below is what we were proposing and I'm going to explain why we were going to propose that is our proposal and what we're asking you to consider tonight is the lower one here. And what it's trying to do and what it does well is it addresses Champion Way. That is the public street that it actually abuts. On the site, if you'll recall, there is a private drive that connects to the gas station. It comes through here and it connects to the gas station and it also connects to the Tractor Supply. And this is a road actually that was built privately and it's not a public way. And so we do not look at the front facade of this building as abutting a public street. And so therefore we felt it was unnecessary to go to the enormous expense to do that, but put the dollars where it counts, which is along the public way, which is along Champion Way for building one. So we're asking you to consider that in your decision tonight. We have added awnings and window side lights next to the doors that access the storage unit buildings. These are storage units. They're not office buildings. They're not retail buildings. They're storage buildings. And so a lot of windows actually creates huge concerns for security, especially if you are renting from this building. So we're trying to blend both of them here to come to a happy medium. I wanted to jump back to, I'm going to move forward now to this view. This shows again the extent that we're going to along Champion Way to upgrade these facades to make them look good and pleasant to the community. The other thing that I wanted to show as we move around is this is a another site plan. And it shows a little different vocabulary and that has to do with now I'm jumping to building four. Down here is building four along Industrial Way. And this is that wetland and creek that comes through. And our plan and our desire was to expand, expand the landscaping from that wetland in front of this building so that it became a softer connection. We also have the building angled back here from the street so that we can create space for that landscaping. So we felt that really the most important part of this building is where it gets closest to the street and also where the driveway is. So we came up with these show, this is currently what the adjacent property looks like to the pedestrians, which shows the site as being very hard and not very pleasant. But as you move down closer to this area where we are, you'll see where the creek and the wetland area is, which we will be cleaning up and making it look really nice.
Mr. Brunner, sorry to interrupt. Just wanted to let you know we have two minutes left.
I have two thirty five left on my timer. I hope is that's okay.
Okay, oh, yeah, we can go with that.
Now I have two twenty five. The top facade is what was approved by the planning commission, which was the original. And actually, Emily, we've drawn it to show what they wanted, which was the trellises and the brick, concrete block base and the windows. And below here is what we actually would were proposing and would like you to consider tonight, which is where we're promoting and really trying to show this building on the corner. This is horizontal siding, which again is that horizontal siding, which looks very similar to wood. This is what we're dealing with with Tractor Supply. This shows the retaining wall. This shows the blank facade of that large building that looms over our site. And and this drawing here will kind of show what we're proposing. So building three steps back a long ways, it's hard to actually see it until you get down by our driveway. You'll see a hint of building three and that facade is Sandy style approved. And but this is building four and this is the facade here that we're wanting to simplify to make it the horizontal siding because we're going to have a lot of landscaping in this area as we expand that wetlands into this space. And then finally, what I wanted to come back to is how we are trying to address the Sandy style, but in a reasonable way, where we're putting the dollars and resources in where it counts, like public plaza spaces, nice landscaping, nice awnings and covers where it counts most, which is along the public way. That's about all that I have, other than I would like to hint at the fact that through this whole project, Mark Benson is going to be investing up to $20 million of investment into this project, which goes directly into the city Sandy. He's helping businesses like my own, which are local firms from the Gresham area in East Portland. And you know, this is the first time I've had to appeal a project to council. In 25 years, I've been able to work it out through the planning commission and planning department. And so I thank you for your time and I look forward to talking to you later if you have questions.
Thank you, Tim. Really appreciate the presentation.
You bet.
With that, it is now time for public testimony. Here are the guidelines. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to state that you agree. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that is all that you say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us and the staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. As a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called for in three groups of testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal and neutral testimony. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. With that, I will call for testimony in favor of the proposal. You have three minutes each. Please state your name and address for the record. Jeff?
Okay, Mayor, just taking a look. And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. I will now call for testimony against the proposal. You have three minutes. Please state your name and mailing address for the record.
Okay, Mayor, the first hand I saw was from Kathleen Walker. So Ms. Walker, you should be able to unmute yourself and please state your name and address for the record.
Welcome.
Kathleen Walker, one, five, nine, two, zero, Southeast Bluff Road. I just want to reference you to my online testimony that's in the record because it has pictures that I can't show to you because I'm not the developer. But I would ask that you please deny the appeal by Mark Benson to be given more variances than he's already gotten. I will spell out that you should deny everything going back to and up till eighteen, zero, four, seven approval. Under the de novo rules, please deny the second set of variances he was given by the planning commission recently. He should remain with the original numerous variance approvals he got from the planning commission in April of 2019. Basically, what he's proposing to do, he's he's gotten all these variances and he just keeps kind of coming to the well. He wants to use nearly all metal buildings, similar to painted metal pole barns that are almost 6,000 feet to well over 30,000 square feet that abut Highway 26 and are very well visible from Highway 26 as well as Champion Way. He wants to use almost no windows or fake windows. The ugly metal buildings with dozens of metal garage doors will be our future town entrance for decades to come. Forget Sandy style. Why have Sandy code if we give variances for every bit of Sandy style? As you look at those pictures that I've got, the northwest storage units from Happy Valley, Eighty Second Avenue, West Lynn Bend, the extra storage business in Tygarde and the Tygarde self-storage, those all have numerous windows. They all have drive up access and they also appear to be fairly nice looking buildings with, to be fairly successful at that. Please go to Google Street View to see how visible this area is. The Sandy design code requirements are not too strict for developers of storage units, as we can see from these other nearby cities. Contrary to what the developer claims, these storage buildings were able to provide many windows and a variety of style designs. If this was being proposed down in the industrial zone, that's great, but it's not. So these these surrounding cities all have stricter design criteria than Sandy for the storage unit. So no wonder he came here. This business does not serve drive through traffic. If he wanted he could put it in a less visible part of town. We can't control what businesses go where, but we can control how they look. If he can't make this profitable along the highly visible entrance to our town, then perhaps he might want to consider putting it somewhere else. But these developers have been told all along what the what the code is and they just keep pushing and pushing and pushing for more variances. We support business and responsible growth. Highway 26 corridor is the main entrance to our town. While some folks don't like Sandy style, the alternative, as we can see, is doesn't look very, very good. The original designs look better, but what the the last go around looks terrible. The Walgreens and Dutch look much nicer than places elsewhere. I think there's a way to to make this work. So please deny under the seventeen point nine, zero, point one, two, zero, Sandy code styles. All the references for more metal and no windows.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. That is three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, let's I'll continue to call for testimony against the proposal.
Okay, Mayor, the next thing we have is someone signed in under the name Nancy Becker. And I'm going to go ahead and allow you to unmute yourself now. You should see a button to do that and please state your name and address for the record.
Ms. Becker, welcome.
If you're not, if you're not seeing that pop up, oh, there we go, I think.
I see her, Jeff. I just don't see her unmuted. Is it possible for you to unmute her?
I'll try to do it manually.
Ms. Becker? Yes, we can. Please state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes. Welcome.
No problem. Nancy Becker, one, four, five, eight, five, Bluff Road, Sandy, Oregon, nine, seven, zero, five, five.
Welcome.
Okay, I agree with Kathleen Walker. And and why do we have codes? You can talk too. You could, why do we have codes if people are going to be asking for variances and such? Yeah, to come back to the well so many times that, no, not not needed to be. You do have, and this is my husband Greg, in case he wanted to say anything.
My name is Greg Becker. I'm at one, four, five, eight, five, Bluff Road. How you doing, Mayor, council member? I do agree with the assessment that Kathleen Walker has said. We have codes for a reason. And if we keep denying the codes, varying from them, why have them? Let's just get rid of all the codes and then we build whatever we want. That is why we have codes. It's too many variances. We need to stick with the proposal that was originally proposed within the codes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Beckers. Appreciate your time this evening. Thank you for participating. With that, I will continue to call for testimony against a proposal.
Mayor, we have someone signed in under the name Andrea Bacon. You should be able to unmute yourself now and please state your name and address for the record.
Am I unmuted?
You are. Go ahead, Ms. Bacon.
Hi, I live in Boring. Am I allowed to weigh in on this?
Yes, we even allow those from Boring to testify. I grew up there. So I guess if my brother shows up, I'll let him testify. Andrea, go ahead. Feel free to state your name and address for the record. Three minutes.
My name is Andrea Bacon. I'm from one, two, seven, two, one, Southeast 352nd Avenue in Boring. I just wanted to say everything that Kathy New Walker, the first speaker, everything she said, I agree 100% with. We we have, we have codes and restrictions for a reason. And if we continue to give and give and give, pretty soon we're going to start looking like Portland or downtown Gresham. And I really take pride in city of Sandy and what it looks like. And and they didn't really take into consideration, yeah, coming through Sandy from Highway 26. But what about the people that go to the movie theaters or at the church there or and the businesses behind and they can see those businesses down the hill and they see the backend sides. It's not going to look very good. So that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. I appreciate you participating tonight. Jeff, I will continue to call for testimony against the proposal.
Okay, Mayor, just taking one last look. And I do not see any more raised hands.
Okay, thank you. And now is the time where I call for neutral testimony. These are general comments, neither for or against a proposal. Please remember to state that name and mailing address for the record. You'll have three minutes. Now, pause for Jeff to recognize anyone that I can get neutral testimony.
So Mayor, we do have a hand raised. Is Nancy Becker, I know that she testified in the previous segment. I'm not sure what the rules are around that.
Yeah, I apologize to Ms. Becker, but we have heard her testimony for this evening. And it would be a little different to propose both against and neutral of it. So I'm going to have to go ahead and and not accept that public testimony.
Okay, Mayor, and I do not see any other raised hands.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I will go back to you, Emily, for the staff recap and recommendation.
Right, so let's see, the applicant had brought up the the wetland planting that would be to the south of building four. And that was actually a planning mission requirement. They're in support of that. That was related to a previous variance to have the building more than 20 feet from Champion Way. So they are, they were aware of that and that did come up in the discussion before. And I think the planning commission had brought up that the building likely in the winter when the leaves are off of that, those plants. So again, the planning commission was was pretty adamant that they were So again, the planning commission was, was pretty adamant that they were, you know, it was the concern about the north elevation of Building 1 and the south elevation of Building 4 and really wanted to see those elevations activated and more detailed. The applicant also brought up kind of the issue of building zutting of the street. Neither the present metal nor the activated frontage are actually tied to zutting. And the windows is tied to activated frontage. So that's, doesn't really factor into any of the three requests with the major modification. And then just to touch on the three, it's a public testimony that we heard. I mean, I think they're corrected and that we do have a code. And that's something that you're going to be considering tonight is, you know, to pull that code. There are nine variances, deviations, and adjustments that were granted with the original designer approval. That designer approval is still in effect. It was approved. They can further design. Today, we're just looking at those three additional variances, which would just further bring the project away from the code. So again, the staff recommendation is really just to uphold one of the two planning commission decisions. It sounds like the public backs the second one, which would be to deny all the modification requests and screw back to the original design approval. The alternative would be to uphold, the alternative staff recommendation would be to uphold the major modification, planning commission decision, which again did allow increased metal on about nine of the elevations, but did deny the decreased windows and decreased activated frontage and decreased metal on seven of the elevations.
So I'll just add a couple of further thoughts. So just, just keep in mind that the code before you tonight was a code that was put together. I think it was a three-to-four-year process. I know Council President Pete Zold and Counselor Exner were very involved in that process. The code's been around since 2008. Current staff, myself included, didn't write the code, so we're not married to the code. All we try to do is uphold the code regulations. In this instance, I believe with the nine variances, deviations, exceptions, whatever you want to call them, with the original approval, that was probably as many that it has ever been granted in the City of Sandy that I'm aware of. With the additional three that were just granted by planning commission, you're upping it to 12. So you're really going into uncharted territory as far as what I've seen in the 12 years the code's been active. However, saying that, as the city council, you have the ability to do that. You have the ability to grant additional exceptions to the code as being requested by the applicant tonight. I just, the only thing I want you to consider really is that going forward, we've had some discussions about changing the Sandy style slightly and making some modifications to it. I don't know if your intention is to modify the Sandy style to the degree that's being requested tonight, but I do want you to think about the implications of allowing this many variances and deviations because it is impactful in that future developers will see this and potentially see it as a slippery slope and potentially see it as, who knows, the next person might have 12 or 13 that they request and they, they expect them to be granted. I'm not saying that Mr. Benson or Mr. Brunner don't have valid arguments for some of these being granted. I think planning commission's seen it that way and that's why they've granted 12. But just keep that in mind that when we make these decisions like we're making tonight, it is a quasi-judicial decision, so you're not bound to make the same decision for a future applicant. But just beware that this decision could have implications for future applications or as far as what they're perceiving as what you would approve. So I just want you to keep that in mind and that's all I have for now.
Okay, and take you to staff. Looks like we have a question for staff from Counselor Exner.
Yeah, I don't know what everybody else was listening to, but when Emily was making her presentation in response to the developer, I was having a terrible time understanding her and I probably missed easily half of her presentation. If that's what the other council had experienced as well, maybe we could have her recap that last half of her presentation.
She was coming in now for me. How's council feel about that? Does that, give me thumbs up, down? Council want to hear it again?
I'd like to hear Kelly say it so I could understand it.
Good point. Nothing against Emily, but her internet's kind of been off all night.
I mean, I think what she was saying is what I basically just said is that planning commission with the original application approved nine variances, deviations, adjustments. They approved an additional three, so that's 12. What I believe what Emily said, it was kind of going in and out for me as well, but is that the two staff recommendations are to either uphold what council approved, or sorry, what planning commission approved originally, which is the nine deviations, variances, exceptions, or the 12 that planning commission more recently approved in modification. And then I believe Emily also said that that's what it sounded like, the three public commenters were requesting. But I mean, that's neither here nor there. That's, that's their opinions. I'm glad that they came and spoke tonight and gave their opinions, but ultimately this is a council decision, so.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other questions for staff before we go to rebuttal? Okay, we will now go to rebuttal testimony. Five minutes. For Mr. Benson or Mr. Brunner, however you'd like to do it.
Why don't I take the first couple of minutes if you don't mind and I'll just jump in here if I can. Guys, the one thing about building, and it's really important that we monitor this. It all comes down to economics and some of these buildings that were provided by Walker were beautiful buildings. But when you look at the average household income in those communities, Sandy can't support it. So what I've done is I've reached out, I'm using local talent and local vendors, local banks. And when we looked at this last approval by the planning commission, the local bank said the numbers in Sandy won't support it. We won't loan the money. It wasn't, I won't loan the money to Mark Benson. It's, we won't do it. And I love the pictures of Northwest Storage because I'm not sure if everybody here in town knows, we have Northwest Storage that's located in Sandy. The building, the building was built in 1989 and it was the last storage project that went ground up in the City of Sandy. So it's there. And so if, and I've talked to the owner, they're reeked. And I've asked them, would you guys rather come to town and would you guys like to take my place? And at which time they've said, nope, the City of Sandy can't support. So what I'm trying to do is find that happy median to be able to use this ground in the best manner possible to have an economic return and to produce a nice financial asset for everybody, myself and the city. The final point I'd like to mention, we had the gas station for eight years. We built it to the Sandy style. We sold it at the end of January, not because it was profitable. We sold it because we couldn't afford the $48,000 per year in property taxes and the mortgage. So the Sandy style may be beautiful, but economics, if economics don't work, you just can't build it, you can't have it. So I'd like to turn things over to Tim for just a couple of quick words, please. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi, yeah, just a couple of comments. You know, one is I want to restate something that I had said earlier and that had to do with, I talked about a $20 million investment. That include, that mark is, that includes the purchase of the property and everything. That's not just the construction. I just wanted to clarify that. And what I, what I did want to do is talk a little bit, comments about what Kathleen's comments were. The fact of the matter is, I think I clearly showed, I can't share my screen right now, but if you recall my site plan and the, this building is not the front and center of Sandy. It's not even close to that. This site is a really challenging site. It's very narrow on a steep hill behind and below these other properties. So it's not front and center. If we were trying to put this where Tractor Supply is, that would be a whole different story. So what we're asking you to do is at least consider our request tonight that the portions of the Buildings 1 and Building 4 that do not abut and/or come close to the public way, i.e. Champion Way and/or industrial, that those would, other facades would not be required to have that investment as far as the Sandy style goes, but let's focus those dollars where it really counts. And so that's really all that I have to say. The option or the ideas, the pictures she showed don't really relate to what we're doing because they're in different communities that really are, they're different building types, they're different locations. It really doesn't apply to what we're doing. And they are nice buildings. I know who built them. But they're different economic models. They're a whole different animal compared to what we're trying to do here in Sandy. So I'd like to have you focus more on just our two requests that have to do with the front facade of Building 1 and our north elevation, I should say, and the south elevation of Building 4.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner and Mr. Benson. With that, I will call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Whoa, there's a motion by Counselor Pete Zold and a second by Counselor Hamlin that we close the public hearing. Jeff, will you do a roll call vote?
Counselor Pete Zold?
Yes.
Counselor Smollett?
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Exner?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Pulliam?
Yes. All right, we are now closed and are open for discussion from the hearing body. You know, a couple of things, I see your hand up, Counselor Lee. Couple of things I just wanted to start off with saying and some things I'm aware of with the property is, and please, people correct me if I'm wrong. I believe Mr. Benson did purchase this property prior to Sandy style being passed. And so I do think that that is an important factor for council to at least consider in our dialogue from some of the testimony that was given tonight, which colors this kind of as, you bought the property, you should have known what our city, you know, was all about with our codes and ordinances and we have the code here and you should have been ready to abide by that. I just wanted to provide a little bit of that perspective because I think in some regards, Mr. Benson had purchased the property, had the code changed and then went through, you know, several economic factors and a variety of mayors and city managers and planning directors and everything since the beginning of this process for him. So that was, you know, just some high-level stuff that I wanted, that didn't really get brought up and I wanted to make sure it was, you know, kind of out there. Counselor Lee?
Yes, as one of the people who never talked to the developer, I don't have any prejudice towards a certain design, but I do feel that the building looks considerably different from what was proposed before. Unattractively different, actually. And so I could go with the staff's proposal, but that's about it.
Thank you, Counselor. Further comments, Counselor Exner?
Yeah, having become, been one of the early on informed or at least supporters of the Sandy style, I really like to see this styles continue. I don't think that variance on top of variance is a compliment to the Sandy style. You end up getting a place down the road that there is a place when you finally get past that look. And I think that some of the things that you can do to a Sandy style, I've also thought that could be modified, could be changed, could be looked at to make a little bit softer, maybe a little bit easier to finance. That was one of the biggest issues that I recall the businesses were commenting on when we first started putting this Sandy style together. And I'm very sensitive to the idea that we want to be able to have a financial economic package here to be able to make money, understand that business does do better in better financial times than others. And so I'd like to see that happen. But in reality, I think if you make so many changes that you eventually end up losing that look, I think that there's a concern for me of being able to, the message to other developers as they go along. Saying that, this is not one of those major entrances to the city. I really don't think you can see this from Highway 26. You can see it from Champion. I think you can see it from some of those businesses that are in the industrial way format, the church, the other businesses that are in that line of stores, there are people parking, you can see some of that. So in my mind, the place to look at this particular building comes from Champion and from Industrial Way. It doesn't come from 26. You have way too many things in the way. Even that private road, be tough to be able to look down, you know, that I've driven that private road and created a little bit of an, almost an accident by looking to the south instead of looking on the road. And it's just, it's tough to see, I think that you would see any of those buildings very well at all. So in my mind, I think it makes some sense to stay with the variances that we're talking about. I think I'm a little unsure about the exact title of it, but it's the 12 variances. It seems like the public is in favor of, and I think that makes some sense that there will be some modifications. That's quite a bit of modifications. I don't know that more than that would really make sense to me. So I think I would support the 12 and call that good. I know that there's going to be some winter time openings as goes along there. Maybe there are some styles that are some plantings that we could do to make better effect on evergreens. That's possible. Anyway, that's my comment.
Carl, I have a, thank you for that. I have a question for Mr. Brunner. You'd mentioned during your testimony that there is, you know, a moment during the planning commission process that, you know, you'd had some ideas and stuff to throw out that could have maybe prevented this. Are those ideas reflected in tonight's proposal? Or, you know, I guess, what were those ideas? Are we talking about those?
Can I ask a question real quick? Because David, we closed the hearing and is that what happened during the planning commission?
Well, technically, the planning commission sort of left it open for that dialogue. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the hearing is technically closed now, Mayor. And so at this point, you're really looking at deliberation amongst yourselves.
Yeah, I just, considering we are outside the hearing process, I just, I thought that we could have some Q and I like any other agenda item that we, that we have.
Yeah, it's just more formal in this quasi-judicial context. You can go ahead if the, if the council wanted to do it and formally reopen the hearing.
Well, let's wait. Let's wait, yeah. I just, it was kind of an off-the-cuff question that I had. I didn't want to get too formal in my, my question of Tim. Yeah, it looked like, so all I had was for commentary was a question. So go ahead, Counselor Pete Zold.
Yeah, yeah. I was on the planning, or on the city council when we adopted the Sandy style. I think Carl was as well, or he was on the planning at the time when that went through. There's a lot of public comments. But to your statement there, I understand where you're coming from, Stan, on, you know, property owner already owning the property, but you could probably say that percentage-wise, 70% of all the properties in the, in that affected area as well and beyond own that property, you know, owned their property before that to this day before Sandy style came into effect. So there was that piece of it. And I did chair the event, the committee, that was mainly stacked up of landowners, business owners for changing some of the, the regulations for the C2, yeah, C2 and I1 and part of it as well. And it was, you know, attended well and, and a lot of input from property owners at that time too, later on down the road. So I think there was a lot of people that could say that same thing today that had already owned their property back then. I guess it comes down to when you apply for your, your application. On that, the, what, the Sandy style doesn't just go along Highway 26. You know, we have Pleasant Street. We have outside of that, the high school itself was under Sandy style as well as other streets that aren't along Highway 26. You know, it's also not just for those that pass through Sandy, but those that live here and want to be in the community and have it look the way that had been decided back then. I know there's been talks about what could be change in Sandy style and that type of thing. And going forward, you know, should we reevaluate it after, you know, so many years of it being in place? you know, so many years of it being in place? And, you know, I think that will come up in future discussions, as we've talked about that in the past. For that part of it. I do believe that from the beginning, that some of the restrictions against a concrete wall, you know, having some of those requirements doesn't make sense, you know, it just doesn't make, you know, it's not going to be seen by anyone except for those on that other side of that concrete wall or that part of that building and some of those other aspects of it. But that being said, I do believe that it should meet the Sandy style and those things that were presented. You know, with the variations that were applied and even granted more of in the last hearing with the planning commission. So that's my feeling.
So, so Counselor, just to, so you're for where they came out of planning commission on, but not what's being further, you know, proposed or suggested tonight? Is that, is that what I was to take from your comments?
Yeah, I'm, I would be for what the planning commission approved at their last meeting.
Okay. Further commentary? Counselor Smallwood?
Yeah, I'll chime, I'll chime in. I'm in agreement with, with Counselor Pete Sold, you know, I feel like the variances that have been given are, are more than fair. I'm also a big proponent of Sandy style. I think if, if you, I've gotten so many comments from people in the public about how good the Dutch Brothers looks. And, you know, while that's just a singular business, it, it, you know, when you drive through town, that's just such a wonderful and appealing view. You know, to our residents and people coming through town. And I think it, I think it adds a lot of value to town, so I think it's important. I feel the variances that have been given are very fair. And, and I support the, the decision of the, of the planning commission.
Counselor Schultz?
I agree with what's been stated, and I would also support the planning commission's decision.
Further commentary? Okay.
The only thing I'd say before I call for a motion is, is that I've heard a lot about variances. And I do believe that, you know, obviously this applicant has raised, I believe it's 12. A couple of times tonight, so a lot of variances. But I do want to say that this is the process, right? Is that you develop the Sandy style as a community. And then you put it to the test and people, you know, they, there's developments that happen. A lot of it's from people outside of the community, a lot of it's from people inside our community. And if they don't like the way the code works or works for their application, then they come in front of boards of locally elected people such as ourselves that then make decisions on our code. So you know, there's nothing that's being asked for tonight. I think that's, you know, outside of the process or, you know, kind of what we, you know, set up to be able to do. You go to planning and then you go to, then you go to our city council. So with that, that's, I've given everybody opportunity to talk. I'm still looking for talking or I'm looking for motions.
Council does realize I can't propose anything, right? Okay. Counselor Lee?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we stay with the planning commission's decision. I don't have all of the various ordinances to speak to, but
I think, I think you would just be uphold it, and David, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you'd be upholding the planning commission decision with the appeal.
Yes, you have it exactly right.
Yeah, if that's the intent, that motion would work.
And I'll, I'll second that, Jan.
I have a motion by Counselor Lee, a second by Counselor Smallwood. Jeff, will you do a roll call vote?
Counselor Pete Sold?
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood?
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Exner?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Pulliam?
Yes. With that, we will move forward on tonight's agenda. We will go to the city manager report. Thank you to Mr. Benson and Bruner for joining us this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, council. So I know you're interested in, well, Counselor Exner is interested in perhaps when we might see in-person meetings for the city council and perhaps for some of our advisory boards. And this is something we've been thinking about. You know, as we're developing our plans for reopening the facilities and it's a question actually to pose to the council is your level of comfort, but also maybe pitch one idea that you know, as we phase into you know, more of the reopenings and the phase three with the governor's plan and beyond. Is there a way that maybe we do a hybrid approach of having some council in the council chambers, allowing some folks to come in person? We can have a few staff members there. And I, you know, one feedback that'd be interesting, interested in hearing your take on is if we can figure out a way to continue some of the Zoom capabilities as we do this hybrid approach and beyond, so that members of the public who, you know, maybe that can't attend or, you know, are not comfortable attending, or we don't have the capacity in the, in a reset up, you know, format for the city council chambers. We can continue to find a way to air the meetings and continue to do some sort of interactive Zoom meeting with some council in attendance. So I think the difficulty with our facility is, one, it's a small, kind of a smaller chambers. On the dais, you are not six feet apart. So the guidance under phase two is still to have appropriate fiscal distancing if you're having essential meetings, which I would argue city business is a central meeting. And so we probably can accommodate, you know, three or four city councillors in the, in the council chambers. And then, you know, probably, I don't know what our full capacity is for, for the audience, but you know, a few chairs in there for maybe a half a dozen individuals I wanted to attend. And then there's the technology side of making sure that we can actually air the meetings. And then also have, you know, a camera on, you know, the council and on the speakers that are in the chambers versus at home. So I'm willing to give it a shot. I wanted to check and see what your level of comfort is. And, and maybe give a, get a sense of when you might be comfortable doing that. Is this a phase two thing? Is this, you know, look at maybe one of the first meetings in July or wait for phase three? So eager to hear your thoughts.
Counselor Pete Sold's hand was up first, and then Counselor Exner?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I'm definitely one that is always liking in-person and that type of thing. And, you know, the video conferencing has always been, I mean, I'm, I'm a technical guy, right? That's my background. That's what I do, has been you know, hard in the past, but actually this has become quite easy. And what's actually quite hard is when you have half of us in a room. And I can tell you from work, and I do a lot of conferences at work, and when I have everyone on, so even when we get into rooms, we individually get on our own cameras because we have much clearer and easier to talk to than when you have in just a small meeting room with two, three people in it. It's very hard for those that aren't there. And so, and the side talks and those type of things that go on versus being remote. And for someone that has tried in the last, you know, 14 years of trying to call into meetings like this, it's been very hard as the councillor on the outside hearing everything when it's a, when it's in that. So I would probably lean because of that is continuing with everyone individually like this. I think actually you, you guys are all pretty great. I mean, I have harder times with some technical people in my background, in my field than actually, you know, you know, with all of you guys, it's actually worked pretty well. And we'll give all the credit to Jeff, because he's the one that's running the show. But it, you know, that's where I fear that we may have a lot of disconnect and a lot of hearing there is if we try to split half of us there and half of us not, and, and all the other stuff that we missed by not being there if we could have been there.
Thank you, Counselor Pete Sold. Counselor Exner?
Yeah, a couple of things. I, in terms of attendance and such, I know that how do I say this? I guess there are people that are more at risk in some of these kind of conditions than others. And I got to understand from all the difference states that you can get it coronavirus at any age, but that over 60 and end up being in that category, that might be a little more high risk. And I, I guess as frustrating as I am to not being able to meet you guys in person, I guess that would be something that might be able to consider if you're going to have to take some out. Maybe look at the high-risk people first and say those are the ones that need to be in video that versus the folks that are less at risk, less concerned, don't have the issues that might make them more at risk. Secondly, we don't have to meet in the council chambers. I know that that's a reasonable place. It has all the cameras and all the other things. But I'm, I was thinking that there may be something in the community room at the library or possibly upstairs in the senior center, community center that might make it maybe not quite as technologically together, but might be able to give us a chance to spread out more and be able to use that until we get to a place where phase three or whenever that timeframe is, we can meet in a little bit closer proximity to each other.
Counselor? Counselor Exner, you know, a couple of things. One is, I, I tend to lean with Counselor Pete Sold where I think we all, just my personal opinion, I think we all should be doing one medium or the, or the other. I just, not that I'm, if I thought it could work, I'd be all for it. I just, with the technology, I just, I think it would be really hard logistically to put together. To your idea, and I'm a, you know, I voted on the Fourth of July, right? I'm an open guy. You know, so I hear you. That, that said, I also worry about moving it to another location. We actually in hopes of increasing our openness and transparency, I worry that we actually lessen that. And the reason for that is, is because we are not able to adequately record and broadcast our meetings. So people will be able to watch it. And it just, and, and that, I mean, that being the major one, right, is that people are not able to be, watch our meetings. And so in this, I, I think you, I, I, the backers, they're like, they're the perfect example, right? I had a picture in my head of them sitting on the couch, you know, sharing their phone back and forth, testifying to their Sandy City Council. And how cool is that, right? Is that here we are on a Monday night, they're sitting on their couch, they're watching our debate, and they call and they testify and they get heard. So there's a lot to be said about, I think, the openness and transparency of doing it this way, quite honestly. So just a couple of my thoughts. I saw Counselor Lee put her hand up there. Go ahead.
I just feel that whichever way we do it, we should all be together. If we went to a different location and use Zoom while we're in the same room, that could be a possibility. But if some of us aren't here and some aren't, it's really not going to work all that well. I can't see it working that well.
Sir Schultz?
Yeah, I agree. I think we need to be all doing the same thing. And then also, I think once we start meeting in person, like Jordan was saying, boards and commissions will start meeting in person. And I just want us to be, I guess, cognizant of the fact that none of us get paid for this. And if we're going to ask people to step outside their comfort zone and sit one foot away from someone else, when they may not be doing much in public, not a great look. So maybe be thinking that through as we're figuring this out. I don't know the answer to that. But I don't love it as a, especially some of our boards and commissions are all in the age group that Carl was referencing and it's just something to be aware of and, I guess, talk out and work out together and figure out how we can make this work. Because I very much want to get back together with everybody as well. But yeah, back to what Counselor Pete Sold said, I think, I think it needs to be all or nothing.
Thank you, Counselor. So Jordy, I'm kind of hearing, yeah, that probably for the time being, let's keep it the way we're, we're going.
Yeah, that's great. I didn't want to put any pressure to make a change or anything. I just thought it was timely to kind of just bring up the topic and see what your temperature was for you know, moving in that direction. But we'll, you know, we can revisit at the next meeting or in July. I'm happy to look into other facilities in the meantime, when we sort of start thinking about phasing into being together again. The mayor does bring up, you know, points that, good points that we've been discussing too about the technology and, you know, being able to use what we have in the council chambers. We don't, we lose that when we go to a different location. So we'd probably have to you know, bring devices or something to have you on laptops and that sort of thing. But I appreciate the feedback and we'll keep checking in with you. Counselor Exner?
Jordan, Jordan, weird idea in the middle of a meeting. If, if we were to do that, could we technically film our meeting by all of us logging into Zoom during our meeting? Could we do that? Would that be a way of filming the meeting while meeting in person? I guess it would, but.
It was one of the ideas I had, Jordan, actually.
Oh, okay, okay. Anyways, go ahead.
One of the questions I had, you may be ready to talk about that next, is that maybe we could look at that when the city building itself, employees have figured out that there's a way, safety phase two or three, whatever that is, when those things start coming out, we ought to agreeing with the rest of the city employees so that we shouldn't be delayed past that, or maybe not even doing it earlier than that. So I don't know if you're planning on doing some visiting about how the city employees will be opening up, attending, opening the doors?
Yeah, so right now it's looking at the end of the month. We're waiting on the supply for our barriers. Most cities are talking about reopening to the public, their facilities, like City Hall this month. Now that we're in phase one and heading towards phase two. And the difference, I think, Counselor Exner, is that we will, you know, I have to make the point, we've been open the whole time. We just haven't been, you know, our doors haven't been unlocked and open to the public, but we're still, you know, been conducting business and doing business by appointment. But when we do open the doors again to the public, we won't be, you know, holding meetings like we used to in our small conference chamber, our conference room. We'll still do a lot of virtual meetings. A lot of our staff will still be either working from home, you know, full-time or on a part-time basis in order to stagger shifts. We have a lot of staff in City Hall that share offices and can maintain distance. So again, it's sort of a phasing in back to normal, normal conditions. But the first phase, when we open the doors, you know, won't be business as usual. And that, that will mean a lot of meetings won't be in person. If they are, there'll be small meetings where, you know, we'll be six feet apart. So so I don't know if it, it makes sense that we marry those two. You don't necessarily have to. So again, I think that's a decision more for you guys, when you're comfortable coming back together as a group in some forum to start meeting again in person. So on that same topic about the facilities, the library is looking to open in, to coincide with phase two. But again, you know, we're we're working with the local business to get the germ barriers installed, I think, which is a good important piece for us. And just in terms of protecting the, you know, the health of our employees, but also the public. It also allows us not to have to wear masks all the time. If you can have, you know, a barrier between, you know, staff and the public at the front counter, you don't necessarily have to wear that. Face covering because you have a, a barrier. And a lot of times when you're, you know, at a front counter, you're closer than six feet. So we're complying with all those workplace regulations and guidance that we're getting from the state office. But I think most people are probably more interested in when the library is open, opening and the community center than they are City Hall. City Hall is more about, you know, being able to accept utility payments in person and, you know, applying for applications and things like that. Like I said, we do by appointment already. Court is the next milestone for us on June 8th, which will be a trials only. So we're really encouraging and requiring people to pay and settle and not have to come and make their first appearances at court, which will help out us a lot. But we do have plans in place on how to get people safely into court and out of court without, you know, Violating the distancing rules and in those things. So also working with local businesses on putting decals down for our library. And City Hall, so you know, physical distancing signs and things like that. Which I think will be helpful. If you've gone shopping, you know what those are about and I think they're helpful for people to understand how to get in and out of the facility and what the rules are. And there will be capacity limits for when the library opens. So I think it's twenty four, twenty five people. So similar to what you've probably seen in, in bars and restaurants and grocery stores and other retail. There'll be a difference in the capacity, but also changing furniture around to accommodate people to be able to move and browse the stacks without being too close to each other. And, and things like that. So. Yeah, we're, I mean, we're getting excited to kind of move into a new phase. Of course, we're still watching all the data and the statistics on how the county is doing in phase one. There has been some uptrends lately and maybe that's attributed to more testing. It's yet to be seen, but we'll continue to watch that. They also have improved their contact tracing, which is another big hurdle for the county. So that's. Getting better, which is a very important way to kind of contain this virus is to identify. Where the outbreaks are quickly and identify the contacts so that they can get them quarantined or isolated as soon as possible. So. I think the latest news was about phase two and sort of the guidance on counties on how they can apply for phase two and a lot of counties have already. Those are the first counties that moved into phase one and were eligible to apply for phase two. So Clackamas is. You know, would be another couple of weeks. And again, we're kind of waiting for more guidance on what the governor's office will require for. Phase two in terms of any changes to bars and restaurants and those rules, social gatherings, sizes. And then there was talks about venues and perhaps other types of businesses that would be allowed, that would be allowed to open. And so I have not actually heard a lot in terms of Sandy and how is, how it's going out there. I. From our standpoint, that no news is good news in terms of not a lot of complaints about crowding or anything like that. In our businesses, I know a lot of restaurants and establishments have, you know, started to open. There's some. Free consultation that businesses can get from OSHA that's available now. So they can go on the OSHA website and actually have a. A Zoom consultation to see if their plans are in compliant and the, you know, questions they might have on things they need to do. So. There's, you know, some good resources out there and of course, all the guidance that's posted on the state's website in terms of what they need to do. To be, you know, safely open.
Jordan, so on that topic, and I see Dave Snyder's on, Dave, if you're not in a capacity to answer, it's fine. But my question is, is so as I've been out and about, I, I've seen a lot of businesses, you walk in, they all got the Plexiglas, you know. A lot of social distancing stuff. I got to imagine, I was thinking, wow, if every business in the country had to go get Plexiglas fiberglass. To put up front, there has to be a shortage of fiberglass or, you know, to do it. And so my question is, is. Are we hearing from local businesses, a hardship to meet the phase guidelines as far as supplies go? We've heard anything? And if we are, is there a way maybe the city could use our purchasing power or anything that, you know, to help facilitate some of our local businesses to go and get those supplies?
I, I have not heard that directly. I'll ask David. But I'll ask him tomorrow, see if that's been something that's been talked about. That's a good question. Just from our standpoint, that's one of the things we're waiting on with our local businesses, the supplier for Plexiglas. Maybe there is a shortage.
Yeah, cool. So I have, thanks.
Counselor Exner?
My particular business, we have what everybody else is doing. We bought a bunch of Plexiglas and we're trying to figure out how to separate the public from the. The agents and all that kind of stuff. So I think. In our case, finding the wipeies has really been tough. I, I, when I do open for a listing, it's like. I gotta scramble for about four or five different businesses to try to figure out if I can find enough wipeies and such. So. There are, I think, some difficulties in getting some of that stuff out there. The other thing is, is I think there's an awful lot of businesses that are just waiting. For the whole head full on the phase two kind of arena. Still doing some of the things that they need to, to make sure that they're protecting their employees. Actually went out to have supper in one of our establishments, La Bamba, here a couple of nights ago and. What a wonderful thing to do, be able to sit in the, out in the open and sit inside, but there were people inside too, very few though. Most of us were outside enjoying the evening and it's just gotta be a bent up pressure to be able to do those kinds of things.
I was, I was gonna mention, I don't, David, I don't think so. I think he's gone away from his computer, but. He did send the information that I sent to you guys about. Kind of loosening the regulations on outdoor seating to some of our local businesses. We sent that out this morning. And I think that's being received with some positive. Feedback. So I haven't heard anything about Plexiglas difficulty stamp, but I, I did see a New York Times article that spoke to the shortfall throughout the country. So I'm sure you're correct. And Carl, we have baby wipes. If you ever need to come over and use some wipes.
What, at your house? You mean with your kids or at the, at the office?
Oh, man. I have to say, my, my work got really excited when they found a fifty gallon drum of, of a hand sanitizer. So a fifty gallon drum.
We found some in the garage and Olivia came in like she just found a pot of gold or something, you know. Go ahead, George.
So just a couple of other things, we've been working on our protocols and policies for return to work guidances. You know, if we do have a, you know, a case within, you know, the ranks of City Hall or other facilities, what the protocols are for that. Our policy on face coverings, like I said. We, you know, we're not going to require the public to wear them, but we are going to strongly recommend and we want to make sure we have enough supply on hand to provide. Face coverings for anyone who would like one if they're coming into a facility and then for staff too, to make sure that they have. Face coverings to use if they, you know, do, you know, are in a meeting or within six feet. Of a patron or a customer or a member of the public or another employee. And we, the final thing is just a checklist that we have now for opening our city facilities and same thing that Counselor Exner was talking about and make sure we have enough. Cleaning supplies and, and the personal protection equipment and things like that, which right now we look to be in, in okay shape. So. That's the, the latest on our, our favorite topic of the day, COVID nineteen. Any other questions? Comments about that? Real quick, I, I sent on Friday, an invite if you're interested in the Bull Run Powerhouse tour. That's tomorrow at ten AM. Will be a physically distanced tour of the powerhouse. And this is part of our effort to look at alternatives for a discharge for the new wastewater treatment effluent. And so just a, an opportunity there to kind of learn more about the restoration that's happened there. And what the potential might be for our wastewater treatment. Again, this is part of a, a really cool project that we're working on that you guys are well aware that we, we receive state funding for and that's looking at, you know, green alternatives to treating. Our effluent and putting and discharging into the Sandy River. And then finally, just our quick update on three sixty second. We're getting close to having that preliminary alignment finished that will take into account, you know, the survey and the topography, cost impacts and environmental. So that should be done here this month and we'll have an internal review on that. So. A good, you know, first milestone to get this, you know, kind of the start of the preliminary alignment on where that future road might wind through that prop, those properties there. So. That's your three sixty second monthly update.
Thank you. I love those. Counselor Lee?
I just had a question for Jordan. The generation plants are those, those two five megawatt plants that were built in the eighties or is there something new going on there?
Good question. I actually don't know. I think it is the, those two because I, we've talked about how much power can actually be generated and I think it was around ten. Yeah. And there's, there's a lot of permanence involved with actually. Doing power generation. So that might be one of those technical things that we need to learn more about, but it's an interesting opportunity to, to look at.
Yeah, I've heard those before. It's an interesting tour.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. We'll move on to Counselor Reports. I'll start with you, Counselor Schultz.
Yeah. So library board met last week. Jordan already touched on a lot of the stuff they talked about. Currently still closed. They're planning on reopening with phase two. That twenty five people capacity is patrons and staff. And they estimate that they probably get seventy five people per hour normally. So it will actually be. Pretty big difference. Someone at the door counting people in and out to see that we're staying within the guidelines. Kids area is going to be closed. It'll be very streamlined, basically in and out as fast as you can and curbside pickup will still be available. With the addition of getting books from other libraries, we'll be back in phase two. So you can put things on hold and have them brought from. The other Clackamas County libraries as well. Um, I just wanted to shout out to the library. I've been really impressed with. Their innovation through all of this. We, you know, we were a leader in providing this curbside service. We're the only ones doing it for a long time. They've been doing all these online storytimes and crafts and activity ideas, really proactive. And I just think it's important that as a city, we see this, you know, important community institution doing everything they can to. Keep going through even something as unprecedented as this. So shout out to them and that's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor Schultz and Counselor Exner.
Yeah, a couple, three things here. One is. What's the status of the art commissioner seat being filled? I know we've got a couple of applicants. Where, where are we? I don't know if this is Jeff or.
Tyler question, unfortunately, I, I think he stepped away from his computer, but I can get you an update on that tomorrow morning.
Appreciate that. Somehow or another, we finished before, well, we haven't finished yet. I understand there's another workshop. Here's a, here's a point and I talked to the mayor about this a little bit earlier. This is that there is so much going on in this city. And I, I know that we've all talked about keeping this a virtual meeting, but these virtual meetings have a tendency to last. Significantly longer than a normal meeting would. I think there's a lot of pauses, a lot of patience, waiting for somebody else to talk. A lot of things seem to be making these meetings longer than we normally would have some. I can't remember. It's been a while since I remember seeing, being and participated in a ten thirty meetings and such, but it seemed like they're more likely to be that long. And I'm finding that. I am. Resistant to make statements and comments in the, the council reports because I'm aware of how late these evenings are. So. I'm, I'm wondering if we're really capturing all the things we want to, just a concern or a worry about what we're doing. I noted that all so many things are hitting us that it's difficult not to fill the entire evening up. So that's a concern I have. I would really want to say thank you to Kelly. I don't know if he's still on or not, that, if that was his piece or it was Dave Snyder about. Opening up the outside seating. That is a, that's just exactly what we should be doing is the things that will help our restaurants. Those outside seating things, like I said, I was at La Bamba's last week. Plenty of spacing between the tables. It was really a nice setting and just, of course, the weather didn't hurt. And thanks, Jeff, for the newsletter. I, I think that's really a quality piece of communication to get it out that way. So. I'm really upbeat about the city, about how they're starting to really. Understand what they need to do and where they're making the points to get out there. The lack, now that I've patted you on the back, I, I think that there are still a number of folks who are taking us the task. I'm aware of recently some. Not quite accurate statements that have been made about how we've done something. And I'll use the example of Bailey Meadows. I hear some people saying that. We were doing some things in the back rooms that we didn't have an open process and it couldn't be any more wrong than statements like that. And. I'm, I'm thinking we need to be a little more proactive in how we get that communication out there that we really are trying hard, very hard to make sure that everybody knows. What we're deciding on, how we're deciding and some of these. Less than accurate statements should be somehow responded to. So I think that's something that. I think we should be looking at a little bit more. I cannot make the power meeting. I, Tuesday mornings are a critical time for me for some business meetings. So. Won't be able to make that and. I believe it's Thursday, Stan, that we're meeting on the virtual with. Tony Diaz and his, a couple of his folks to talk about some partnerships that we might be able to do with some daycare. Day kinds of activities with our kids. They're a perfect partner for something like that. This is like, they have the facilities. They know how to. Keep kids interested. Have a huge facility out there at the old Rosin Lake. So we're going to talk a little bit about how that might work. I don't want to take all of Stan's steam, but I did. So there it is. And that's what I have. Thank you. Somebody's gotta do that.
Yeah, Counselor Lee?
Well, I spent all of last week with the county commissioners and the rest of the budget committee trying to pare down a one point two billion dollar budget. And we have no idea what we're going to get from the state because of their losses, what we're going to get from the feds. So. We finally just went with a base budget, knowing we have to come back every month for six months and tweak it. On another point, our resiliency committee has met twice. We're inventorying and listing future thinking items. This Thursday night, C four is going to talk about the county's climate action plan. So I'm interested to see what they're coming up with. And then we heard today that we're going to get that grant that we talked about with GOS Institute. To do planning for the city on a broader basis, once we get done with our internal work. So that was a nice surprise.
Excellent.
That's great. Thank you. And Counselor Hamlin?
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Smallwood?
Also no report.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pete sold.
Uh, yeah, I just want to give Jeff praise. I know a couple of other people did too, but that newsletter was awesome. I really do appreciate it. That's what I've been looking for almost decades, you know. That, that's just great. I, I really do appreciate you do have a talent that we are taking, we can benefit from. So thank you so much for. Doing that and your skill set there. So just give you kudos for that. And I've heard from people in the community. That have commented on how great that newsletter has been to them. So, and I've never heard that before on our communication. So just good job.
Thank you.
I won't be able to meet tomorrow either for that meeting at the power station. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. And so quick report for me. One is I, I would just say it's good to be open. Into our phase one opening here in Clackamas County. It sounds like, I'm not sure if Washington has opened or not, but they're not too far behind. Well, it was still kind of lingering out there. Got my haircut here, Sandy, a little sore from going to the gym. So we're, we're kind of back at it again, which is, which is nice. I just wanted to say how proud I am of some of our local business owners. I mentioned earlier, as you walk around and go into their restaurants, you see how serious they're taking the phased opening. With a Plexiglas everywhere, everything is spotless. I know when you go into an athletic club. Rory, Smallwood and I were told that a trade magazine has actually approached them about best practices. And everything they're putting in to keep it clean. So they're going. Far above and beyond. In fact, they have, I think, two or three full time people that just go around cleaning machines the entire time. So. Proud of our community. It's good to be open. Counselor Exner mentioned. That Tony Diaz meeting and with trackers, they've reached out a couple of times. I'll be honest, I've been a little hesitant. To speak to them because we're all so darn excited about a possible partnership and I know they are. I just, I hate to set. You know, expectations that we might not be able to fulfill, but they, they've reached out several times now and I, I wanted them to know that we are excited. We just might be too excited. So. We're going to talk to them about that along with, I believe they have some childcare ideas that they wanted to put forward. Counselor Exner mentioned. We'll definitely be looking to plug Counselor Lee and Schultz into that if, if, when, you know, it kind of. We'll definitely be looking to plug councillor Lee and Schultz into that if, if and when, you know, it kind of percolates and goes. But we're excited for that meeting. I'm with everyone else on the Sandy newsletter, just a hat tip to Jeff, phenomenal newsletter. And also have noticed some of the social media stuff and just some strong efforts going there. So really appreciate all your work you're doing, Jeff. We're all seeing it and noticing it and it's making a difference. And then just the final thing, and this is the first time I mentioned it, but you know what? I've been complaining about this for like well over 20 years in Sandy. And if I'm going to be mayor, I'm going to do something about it. So Highway 211 in Proctor, when you get to that light, everybody gets stuck waiting behind people, waiting for them to take that left-hand turn that's permitted on red. It would be like super killer to have a sign there that says left turns permitted. For that person that can see the sign and then maybe turn left. So if you're a community member and you're watching, I want you to know that I am committed. I'm going to look into that. I think it needs to happen. It's a frustration for many of us on our side of town that commute out that way. And darn it, it needs to be fixed. So that is a big priority of mine that I, I like to see staff look into for us. So with that, I am calling this meeting to an end, to adjourn, and we will then reconvene for our work session because we're never over anymore. Adjourned. And though, though, I'm not going to make Jeff call the roll.
Okay.
So with that, staff report, Jordan?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry that we tacked this on at the end. I think this agenda, as I think councillor Exner was alluding to, a lot of our agendas have been pretty packed lately. And that's a nature of boy, January feels like years ago, but you know, going through sort of what our work plan is and how many big things we have going on, but then getting hit with things like, you know, Bailey Meadows and these appeals that, you know, have sucked up a lot of your time. So that being said, yeah.
Just real quick, Jordan, before you get going, I'm going to start fining each one of you like a hundred dollars a meeting that used the word short.
I know.
Right? Seriously, it's forbidden from this time forward. I don't want to hear it by any of you.
Yeah. You know, it's aspirational though, right? Like we all start that way. This is going to be really short. And then we just keep going, you know?
Jordan, you've got to set goals that you can actually hit though.
Sorry. All right. Well, talking about Bailey Meadows, we got a couple of items that we wanted to talk with you about tonight. Because there is some actions, several on the 15th in a couple of weeks that are related to what we talked about, the development, with the development agreement. A couple in particular, I think one especially because it's a code change, the change with regards to our SDCs. And then the other, the capital improvement plan. There's also the annexation that will be in front of you on the 15th. So a number of things. And we thought rather than trying to handle that all at once, maybe we should do it at 9:45 p.m. No, but having a work session, a chance to kind of talk about these things with the council beforehand would probably be a good idea. So David drafted up a memo that was added to the packet. Sorry about that late last week, but I, it's up. And I'm going to actually turn it over to David to kind of walk through this. He's been involved with SDC code writing in other cities. And that's, you know, obviously we won't have to recreate the wheel, that there's some models of how we can do, you know, a code change to allow the SDC surplus credits and the transfer of credits. And then the other item is pretty straightforward in terms of adding a project to our CIP, which I'm pretty sure we've done in the past here. So David, I'll go ahead and give the reins to you to give a nice short presentation or explanation of the couple of items that will be before then on the 15th.
That sounds good. I'll try to live up to that to the best of my ability. Lawyer talking in short sometimes is a little bit oxymoronic, but I will do my best. So yeah, as Jordan said, and you know, you can, you can actually probably blame me if you have to blame somebody for talking about this at at 9:50 on, on Monday night. But I, I'm talking to Jordan last week. I thought, you know, we're almost, I've been doing a lot of this, doing a lot with respect to the subdivision, obviously. And I just thought before the 15th, maybe it would be wise just to have a brief discussion about particularly as Jordan said, really two items that that come out of the development agreement. One of those is amending your capital improvement plan or the CIP. And I'll also apologize in advance for yet more jargon and more acronyms. So there's the capital improvement plan, the CIP. And then there would be a, an amendment to your municipal code to address SDC, system development charge credits. So very briefly, and those two things are related. They really are both a system development charge issue, but every city that has a system development charge also has associated CIPs or capital improvement plans. And those would be for parks, for sewer, for both storm and sanitary, for streets, of course. And what it basically does is, is sets a list of, of projects. And generally, those are things that you want to, you're going to collect system development charges more often than not to pay for some of the projects on that list, although you can also have a charge that would go to basically repay for money that the city's already spent on certain capital improvements. So one of the things to have the ability to have credits, which is a part of the Gunderson Road project, then you need to have the project listed on your capital improvement plan. For the 15th, it'll be a pretty straightforward exercise, frankly. It can be more complicated, but I don't think you need anything more complicated than necessary at this point. And I'll just very briefly touch on that. On the 15th, what we're proposing, and this is what the development agreement speaks to is, is having Gunderson Road listed on the city's transportation CIP. That's done by a resolution. And once that's done, then under state law, the, the, the road itself is, is something that can be awarded SDC credits. The other aspect of putting a project on a CIP is to allow a portion of that project to be funded with SDCs. And that is a slightly sort of bigger step that we're not having or not proposing that you do on the 15th. But it would be something that you certainly could consider. I think it would be worth considering. And probably the time to do that would be when you finish up, the city finishes up its amendments to its transportation system plan, TSP. And that's happening. And I don't remember the exact timing on that, but I would imagine within the next six to 12 months, maybe within that timeframe, you're going to see that. And then at that point, I think it would be logical to think about if you do decide to increase the SDC based on new projects, that a portion of that would also include the Gunderson Road project. So but that 15th is just going to be on the, on the CIP piece, just having an additional, an addition to the list that would be Gunderson Road. And then the other piece on the 15th would be, as Jordan said, an ordinance, a code change to chapter 1528. That is the provision of chapter of your code that deals with SDCs, how they're collected, the methodologies that support them. And then also in this particular case, they have a section that's, that deals with credits. And so one of the things that will be proposed in that amendment is to allow for credits, when someone has a credit, to transfer them to a third party. And state law allows that. Other communities have, sorry, a little light issue there. Have that in their codes. And really what it amounts to is a, is a way to basically have more flexibility and more opportunities, I would say, when these, and it's not just Bailey Meadows. I mean, I think this is something, especially this piece, that is maybe a little more forward looking that can, can allow for capital improvements, the developer to build them when that might not otherwise exist because there's not an opportunity for those credits to be, to be sold. Right now, the city's code has, which is a really common provision, an allowance for having excess credits to be used in a future phase of the development. But it doesn't allow for a, a person that holds credits to actually, what amounts to selling them on a, on a market to a, to a third party who could then use them towards another project. So that's, that's what's going to be proposed for the 15th. It's a fairly minor code change. One of the thing I would say, and again, I don't recommend this, and we're not, we're not proposing it for the 15th. But the last time the chapter 1528 was really touched at all was in 1991. And state law has has changed over that time, as you might imagine, and how SDCs and the, the, what, what jurisdictions, jurisdictions can do with SDCs. So at some point, if and when you ever have a breather and the city has the, you know, confined time and thinks it's logical, I would also recommend maybe taking a look at that chapter more broadly. Because I think there are some updates that in addition, just to this, this transferability piece. City of Tigard has a, I was thinking of going through that, but at this hour, I'm, I'm not going to unless you want me to. But has a, has a good example, I think, of an ordinance that is, has been updated and through the years. And I think serves as a really good template for that. So that's really kind of it in a nutshell. I don't want to, you know, spend a lot of time and your precious time on this, but I'm certainly willing to take any questions or hear from, from you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that. And questions from councillors? Yeah, it's pretty free before and I feel good about it. Feel comfortable.
Thanks, David.
Yeah, I really appreciate, appreciate it, David.
You're welcome.
And okay. Anything else, Jordan?
No, that was it. This was an opportunity. If you have any questions about any of that, you know, we could, we're happy to send you a link to maybe the Tigard code, David, if, you know, if you have other examples too, so you could take a look at that in advance. You know, I, I know there's other cities that have, you know, the, the SDC surplus and transfers in it too. So but yeah, I mean, this was again, just an opportunity to kind of talk about these, introduce these topics to you before your evening on the 15th and appreciate David's help in putting together that memo and doing the overview. So.
So, so to go through the calendar, we have these things on the 15th. We have GMs testifying here soon in front of commission. And then we've got ODOT that we've got to deal with on 211, correct?
Yeah, actually. So I do have a draft. They are making another revision, but they said they'll have it to me this week. So we may have the the jurisdiction transfer in front of the council on the 15th as well as a draft. And we don't have to have the council actually make it a, you know, decision on that yet, but we, we can get that in front of you perhaps even on the 15th. Just to make that meeting even more fun.
I was going to say, so the 15th is, we've listened to councillor Exner, we're going to go till 2 a.m.
So just so you guys all know, I will not be at the meeting on the 15th because of what was just said, but I won't be there regardless. So I'm going to be on a houseboat in the middle of Shasta. So.
All right. Well, I too will be gone for that meeting. I'll be on a fishing boat in Homer, Alaska.
Oh, okay, great. The face is not, is now more of concern.
Bethany, are you going to be around?
You have your hand up. Where are you reporting?
I'll be here. No, I just kind of like, I guess, kind of a maybe dumb question, but most of this, like, since council made this decision to move forward with this development agreement and everything, this stuff has to happen now, right? Like it's kind of the next step now that that decision was made. Is that correct?
Well, these, so I like to answer this. So as we talked about, and you know, we have to, everything has to happen or our approval of that development does not go forward as we talked about as the council.
Okay.
Right. But that, that said, all, all these decisions are looked at as both part of this and independent. And or at least I believe they should be because you look at like that 211 acquisition. This Bailey Meadows deal and Gunderson's a big reason to do it, but it's also not the only one, right? And so it should be part of, far factor of this decision. But to me at least, I don't believe it should be our, our sole reason why we're doing it at all.
Right. We wanted to, we were looking at doing this already. It was already on the roadmap. But I was wondering, I think that, you may correct me if I'm wrong, but the 211 transfer with ODOT, that's probably going to be a larger, a lot more details in that than maybe just, maybe a workshop to kind of understand or lay it out or describe it, you know, to us. I don't know what you guys are thinking, but I can only imagine it's, there's going to be some, a lot of discussion and complication, you know, of what's in it. Not seeing it, I don't know that, but you know, is that something that we should do the hour before the council meeting or whenever as a workshop?
Yeah, that's a good, good idea. I mean, yeah, it's, it is a lot to take on in one evening. And because there, there's not the same urgency to have that, you know, done by the council. I mean, there's obviously some interest in being timely on it, but the, once the council approves it, it has to go back to ODOT and have it approved by the OTC, which is going to take probably until August or September at the earliest. So we have some time. So we can do that at a different work session.
I, I know. Yeah, you're just kind of throwing out there, but I would prefer to do it separate. Just it needs its own deliberation and attention.
I'll do it after the council meeting. Do it before.
Wait, night work session.
Jeremy and I remember those days when the planning commission didn't end until like one or two o'clock in the morning. That I don't know if I want to see that again.
No.
Yeah. Do we got anything else?
Yeah, are we all good?
That's it. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time this evening.